... o'clock and we have almost everyone here, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 6th, and this is a full meeting of the regular city council. And the clerk will call the roll. Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Divine?
Here.
Givner? Graney?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Here.
Ocasio?
Here.
Ai Rivera?
Here.
Jay Rivera? Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
And the city council. Thank you, everyone. So for those who are tuning in, this is being recorded right now and livestreamed on the city's website, as well as the Channel 15 Public Access Station and on Zoom. And we thank the Hoyok Media as well for helping to provide translation. And this evening, we've had Councilor Anderson Burgos is called to vote first, so he's ready to report for duty. Thank you very much. And, alright, so going into the agenda, we don't have any public hearings tonight. And I didn't see anyone sign that, but let's just double, let's double check. Good? I don't see any hands on Zoom, but I trust you more than me. Alright, so not seeing anyone from public comment this evening and not having any items laid on the table, we will head into communications. Item number one is from Mayor Joshua Garcia, veto of the two-third majority vote ordinance. Council Bacon?
Thank you. Relative to this letter from Mayor Garcia, I'd like to make a motion to override the veto.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Under discussion, the motion's been made and seconded to override the mayor's veto. Council Bacon?
Thank you. So I'd like to make three major points briefly. One, just to remind my colleagues that we had an 11-2 vote on this matter, and it followed approximately a year of discussion and debate in committee before it came back to the council for its final vote. So it's been given thorough vetting by all of us. The second point that I would like to make is that in the process of the debate that we had for about a year, there was a lot of back and forth. There were some of us who wanted to keep the rule as it had been historically written in the rules, and then there were others who wanted it to be modified somewhat relative to those being present to vote. And so we did come to a compromise, which I think is part and parcel of good government, and that was the product that was voted on 11-2 at the meeting. The other, the third point that I would like to make is that we already operate under a strong mayoral form of government, but we as the city council function as a separate body. And part of what we passed in that ordinance is maintaining and formalizing that individual role that the city council plays. There's no doubt about it that the mayor supported certain counselors and that certain counselors have supported the mayor, and that's all well and good. But I think when it comes to the passage of ordinances, when there is an overwhelming majority of the council that passes it, in the past, the mayor has honored that by seeing that it was a supermajority of the council that was in favor of it. So I'm just hoping that the folks that voted for this last time will keep their vote that we worked on for a year and that we will put this ordinance in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Divine?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Counselor Bacon was saying that we talked about this for over a year, but yet the communication that we have here and the order, it was approved June 18th, 2024, this year. And I'm not sure if I heard Counselor Bacon correctly, but it seems to me that she said, because we are in agreement with the mayor or with the mayor, that that's why we vote for things. And I'm a little insulted by that. We have a right to make up our mind. We have a right to read things. We don't, you know, there are times that we might disagree with the mayor, whether he supported us or not. And so for that reason, I just want to mention that that was an insulting remark.
Madam President, since my name was invoked, I would like to respond.
Of course, I was, I was definitely going to call on you. It's okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So what I said was that we had discussed it for the better part of a year, and I didn't say anything about anybody voting one way or the other, other than to remind folks of the vote that we had to pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Jordan and then Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yeah, just briefly, a couple of things is, one is, this was in the rules for many, many years on the basis of a couple of points. One, we wanted to build consensus on major things like ordinance changes and rules, so that, you know, it's not just seven-six or what have you, that we would have a large consensus. And this has been in place for many years now, and it's worked well. It also sort of takes some of the council mayoral political side out of it in that if you don't have it this way, what we observed over the years was that the mayor, the things that the mayor was in favor of, he would encourage the majority vote. And then anything that he didn't like, he would veto it and then try and stop it that way. So it kept out that sort of meddling, for lack of a better word, in, into the process and that the council would build a consensus in this room after much discussion. So there was a lot of thought that went into this rule many years ago to have this in place. And secondly, a lot of thought went into when Counselor McGee had proposed that we would put this in the ordinances on the basis that the law, how this even surfaced as an issue was, because it wasn't an issue before, was that the Law Department wanted to have clarification on the issue of, was it going to be two-thirds of the whole body or two-thirds of those present? So that became the source of the discussion. And so to get into all of that, I thought the ordinance committee did a good job. They, they went through the whole process for quite some time, went back and forth, and myself, I was in favor of the current rule, which had been that it was two-thirds of the whole body, and actually compromised. I voted for something I didn't really want to vote for, but I voted for that it would be just based on two-thirds of those members present. And so that's where we landed, and I'm disappointed that this has been vetoed, but it kind of proves the point that why this rule exists in the first place is the mayor is now getting involved, and it's not just him, it's been other mayors in the past, about what's going on here. It's one thing to have input and whatnot, but the, to have it where it's just majority, we don't have consensus, and then it goes through and then he can just stop anything that can stop the majority votes when he doesn't like them, that doesn't seem very right. The current system that we've had has worked fine. It's helped us to build consensus. It's also helped to protect the public in a lot of instances. For example, you know, we set, we established the sewer rates based on ordinance. So by us having a two-thirds majority rule on ordinance changes, it requires that there's a strong consensus to protect the public when it comes time for rate increases and things like this, that there's really a sense of, of, you know, this has been thought through and it's somewhat less political because there's more people at the table supporting it and there's more, it fosters compromise on a lot of different things, as I compromised on this legislation is a classic example. So I would encourage the council to stick by its 11-2 vote. I think you made the right decision. A lot of people compromised. We thought about this for quite some time, and, and I would encourage the override, not as any slight to the mayor, but just as our vote was the correct vote. This council did, voted the right way, and I think we should stick to our vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, I have Counselor Anderson Burgos and then Counselor Graney.
Thank you, Madam President. So when I look at the Massachusetts General Law, it's basically, it's a script. You know, you look at it and you say, this would make sense. It's across the state, that it's recommended that it should be a simple majority. And then I look at some of the points that the mayor made with other municipalities that follow what Massachusetts General Law states, which is Westfield, East Hampton, North Hampton, which I consider our sister cities. And then I look at the work that I've spent in this room over the years and the amount of headache. And not that I'm saying it's not, it's worth the fight, but I feel that this rule congests all the work. And we sit here and go back and forth and back and forth, and I feel that, basically what I'm stating is I'm changing my mind. That's it. I'm, I'm going to change my mind just because of all the years I've spent in here and I've seen the shenanigans go back and forth. And I'm good, I'm, I'm good for a good debate, but sometimes even the smallest things because of this rule, the smallest thing, something that just does not make any sense, we sit here and argue about. So that right there is why I'm changing my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Graney.
Yeah, this council voted 11 to 2 in favor of this ordinance change. Either we stick to our guns, keep the separation of powers between the mayor and the city council, or we don't. Let's just vote on it. This is a dead horse. We've been beating it for a year, so let's move on. Let's vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thanks. Good, good evening. Welcome back. The, the reason I'm, I'm going to stay consistent, I'm going to vote the way I voted last, last term and stick to this. I would point out that, that the, since we've been in committee for so long, this is the first time we ever heard from the mayor. So you can say what you want about the arguments we have here, but the mayor knows that we're meeting in committee time after time, month after month, relative to this matter. Not one time, not one time do we get a communication from, from the mayor's office or the Law Department or anyone, except for the hard-working ordinance committee that did all, that did all this. I'm, I'm a little taken aback that councils are going to change their votes and not, not be consistent, but that's their choice and that's the way it's going to be. I would only point out two other things, Madam Chair. This is our friend Todd McGee proposed this, so let that sink in for a minute. And also, the rule's the same. It's still going to be two-thirds. It's still going to be two-thirds right now. It's not going to change. This does not change it. It's still going to be two-thirds. The only thing Todd was trying to do was codify it, and, and that's all. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Alright, so the motion was made and seconded, oh, I already lost it, to override the veto of the mayor. And if you're voting in favor, you're voting to override the mayor's veto. With that, the clerk will call the roll. Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
No.
Givner? Graney?
Of course, yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
No. I'm sorry, I'm here you. No, no, thank you.
Murphy Ramboletti?
No.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Izzy Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon? Seven yays, four nays.
Madam Clerk, Madam Chair?
Motion to reconsider. Second. Motion to reconsider and then unless...
I was sworn I was going to speak, but you know.
I'm sorry, I didn't actually call on anyone though, so, plot twist. Counselor Bartley did, I heard him first.
I was simply going to make a motion to reconsider and for the purpose of laying.
Okay.
Wait, must be an echo.
All's well that ends well, okay.
It's not an echo, that's what I was going to say.
No, no, don't take offense, I'm only joking.
I'm not taking offense, but.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded to reconsider the vote?
Yep.
Under discussion?
Under discussion. Thank you, Counselor Rivera, I will say. I appreciate the, the yes vote. And we'll see, we're missing two colleagues tonight, so this is an important matter. I think we should wait. Well, I'm going to make, now make a motion to table it, and we'll see where that takes us.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to lay the item on the table.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Alright, the ayes have it. So with that, it is tabled, and we will move forward. Item number two from Mayor Josh Garcia, reappointments of various members of the council on aging.
You received and make the reappointments. These are all reappointments.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to reappoint all of these individuals.
Say appointment, not reappointment, is that, are they really?
They are already, yeah, they're already.
Item number two, but how about like three, four, and these other ones? Are we doing those too, or?
Oh, no, I'm just doing three. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just doing two.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. So, motion's been made and seconded to reappoint the following individuals to serve as commissioners on the council on aging. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
The motion to take three and four as a package, please, and send them to public service.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to take items three and four as a package and refer to public service. The item three is from Mayor Garcia, appointment of Vanessa Santiago to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And item four is from the mayor, appointment of Jorge Santiago to serve as the Director of Veterans Services. Both sent to public service. Any other discussion?
Just, Madam Chair, there's, I'm losing it. Madam President, the, just for the public, they're both different ad, I know the last name's Santiago, but they're, they're different addresses, so I'm just going to point that out.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam President?
Yes.
Relative to item two, just for the public, should we read the names into the record of the people that are on?
We never do.
The council on aging.
I didn't remember us doing that, but I'm, if the body wants me to, I shall.
Well, it's not required, I guess, but I just thought if people like to know who's on there.
Got a long agenda.
You know.
True. Well, they can definitely look online and see the, the information. So with that, all those in favor to send to public service?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item five?
Madam President, can we take five and six?
Yep.
As a package? And I'll do whatever I want. We should probably send it to committee, but I, I would be comfortable just passing this tonight, but I'll, I'll make the motion and send it to DGR.
Okay.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to send item, or take up items five and six as a, six as a package and send to DGR. The item five is from Mayor Joshua Garcia. It's the Elms College lease agreement for the use of McKenzie Fields. And item six is also from the mayor. It's the Valley Blue Sox lease agreement for use of McKenzie Stadium. Counselor Divine?
Yeah, just to, for some informational explanation, these are lease agreements that the mayor has the right to sign off on, and my understanding is the DGR committee is not even going to be meeting till September 30th. So my suggestion would be just to receive them tonight.
Just, thank you, Counselor Divine. So these, my understanding is that these are for longer than 30 days, so the leases do go to, normally, they go to the Development Government Relations Committee. However, if it's the will of the body to approve them tonight, I have, I am indifferent either way. Counselor Bartley?
Can I, I, just to explain. So this has to do with property rights, so the mayor can sign off and negotiate, but it's subject to city council confirmation, every one, whether it's a lease for 30 days, a license for a week, or a sale of property. So we just don't receive it. We, we have to look it over. Second off, for, for these, they've already happened. I talked to the Parking Rec Director months ago. He realizes that, that they should have been shipped to us in a more timely fashion. They had been, but this one got by, got by Parking Rec Commission, so be it. I, I would just say, send it to DGR because it's, it's a, we could pass it, it's a moot point, but at least we give the committee and some of us that don't have experience with it, a chance to review the contracts and get a better understanding. But just so the president knows, they're very standard and, and they're exactly, they're almost exactly the same as they were the prior years.
Yeah, I do remember them as on DGR, thank you. Counselor Rivera?
I guess for me, that's where the question lies, right? If they're exactly the same for the prior years, like taxes, I mean, prices go up on a lot of different things, and we got to pay employees more for maintenance of the fields. So to me, the question lies is, where are, like, are, are we negotiating a contract that works in favor for us as a city? Are we negotiating a contract that works in favor for the teams that are playing? Which is cool, but I think for me that we're at a point now where hopefully we're negotiating something where maybe they're paying the, the maintenance person for the season, right? Instead of the city paying it. But that's not for me, I guess, right?
Okay. I mean, it sounds like it could go to DGR, our folks. Counselor Bartley?
President, can I just respond to that?
Sure.
Madam Chair, my friend. So we, I, I agree with you. We, we don't negotiate anything, just the mayor's, we just review it and give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. But I, I hear you, okay, and I think you're more right than wrong on, on that, but it, it's up to the mayor and the Law Department to sort of figure the things out. But at least if it goes to DGR, Madam President, people can review it in a leisurely pace. Go from there. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Graney and then Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I'd like to quickly review these things myself because it involves police, it involves fire, and it involves a lot of different issues that make them up, and Counselor Rivera is absolutely correct, cost-wise, you know, increases, decreases, you know, who's being hired, who's being, you know, the whole ball of wax. I'd like to review it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Counselor, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I mean, I am aware of the Valley Blue Sox historically having a contract. I was not aware of Elms College having one historically, so maybe that's relatively new. The only thing I would also point out is the terms of these contracts have already started months ago. So my question is, how do they do that? Like, how is it, we're getting contracts that we're already four to six months already into, and we're now, what if we said no? I mean, I mean, I don't, they better be careful, you know, the rubber stamp hits the desk maybe a little too quick here. So we, I think that's, they, they, this should be coming to us before they actually start using it. So that's one thing, maybe that would be a helpful reminder at DGNR.
For sure. Okay, so it sounds like we are going to send this to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thanks, everyone. Item seven, item seven is the communication for the pilot, City of Hoyok Remote Telecommuting Pilot Program. Sorry, say that again.
Receive and refer to ordinance.
Receive and refer to ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item eight is from City Clerk Brenna Murphy Leary, the letter regarding the appointment of the city treasurer.
Receive.
Motion to receive.
Second.
Is it, did you have?
I'm just, after Kevin makes his comment, I just want to make a comment.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive, under discussion? Counselor?
You want, oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, I'm good.
Bartley, I thought, sorry.
No, I, well, there's, there's this one here, and I think there's some other similar, similar orders relative to treasurer, and I wish I had circled them, but I didn't do that, so.
Yeah.
I guess what, that's, I don't want to delay it anymore, but to, just to receive it, is that what we want to do?
Well, there's a request for us to perhaps take some action, but I think we'd have to have a discussion if we're going to do that.
Yeah, if we just receive it, how do we have a discussion?
Good point.
Well, they would have to file something with us to do something other than what we've already agreed to. What we agreed to is already done and passed. So unless somebody who's asking this council to do something else, they would have to file something.
Okay.
Okay.
And Counselor Divine, I saw your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I think if you read Clerk Brenna Murphy Leary's response, she really does not want to have election on the same day. So she wants to postpone that election to another time, and I think it's important that we honor her request. She's the one who has to hire the poll workers, she has to make sure the ballots are correct, all of that. So I think that's what we need to do, is go with the city clerk and what she wants to do, to have a special election rather than the one altogether.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rolls and allow Attorney Mantaloski to speak. She just had her hand up.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Attorney Mantaloski, thank you for being here.
Thank you. So yeah, I was just going to chime in that there is, there is the order at 73, which was probably the one you saw, Counsel Bartley. So if you guys wanted to take that up, that's a motion to reconsider. So if you wanted to take that up and to discussion, I think maybe you could do that together if you wanted to. I just wanted to make that, that clear, that there was actually an order to do that.
And while we're on that, item 21 is from State Representative Pat Duffy, which is related to this as well, so I would also entertain that.
What's the number of the other?
Twenty-one and 73. Thank you.
So a motion to suspend the rolls to take up as a package, 21, 73 with eight.
Thank, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor to take up?
As a package.
As a package, under discussion for that. So 21, 73, along with item eight.
Under, we want to go to discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under discussion. Counsel Jordan?
So I don't know if, what people are looking to do. I know one thing I'm not looking to do, which is, I think this council was clear that at the end of the day, we said that the Hoyok voters are going to weigh in on changing someone from being elected to appointed. And if that creates an administrative burden, then we're either going to have to do one of two things. Go forward, as this council already voted, it considered all these different points that were made previously, and that's point number one. Or number two, we're going to have an election on another day, which I'm potentially open to. What I'm definitely not in favor of is what 73 says, which is, as opposed to the city voters. I don't think this council could have been more crystal clear that we wanted to have the public weigh in, no matter what we think. You know, the issue here is, this is their government. They have elected officials. We should not be taking away, and I'm rehashing these arguments, but since it's all coming back up again, I will rehash these arguments on democracy again. Public has elected officials. That is their right to have elected officials or not. So when we all decide that, we don't want this person to be elected anymore, we want them to be appointed. We had a very thoughtful discussion. I agree. I voted to put this and do this, and I, I think it might have been unanimous that we all voted to do this. But what we all also unanimously agreed is that we're taking away the public's right to vote to have an elected treasurer, and that's, that's their right, not our right, their right. So if that's going to be taken away from them, they should do that. And that's why we said it would be crystal clear that, okay, let's do it, put it before them, and then however they vote, they vote. If they think it's a great idea, they'll do it. If they don't, they won't, and we'll stay as is. But what I'm concerned about is what 73 says, which is, we're taking that away from them. So that's a bridge too far for me. So I don't know if the plan is, we're going to send this package, this all to committee, and then we're going to kind of think about a second date, maybe, you know, as a compromise, if it's really too much. I, I'm sympathetic to the point about it's two ballots and all of that, but I, I mean, we kind of knew that, though. Like, we've kind of already discussed these points. So I'll, I'll leave it there. I don't know if the plan is to vote on this tonight, but if... if that's the master plan, I'm not on board for that master plan. I, I feel very strongly that the public, whether it's the mayor, the counselors, school committee members, treasurer clerk, any of these positions, we should not be unelecting them without the public's okay. They put them in office. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I mean, I know, I got, I have a few people in line, so I have Counselor McGrath Smith, and Counselor Anderson Burgos, then Counselor Bacon, unless I'm missing anyone. And I'm not gonna weigh in now, I'll weigh in later. I can talk about it in my president's report, but I don't have a master plan, just to...
Well, I, I, we, it's my order, but we can, we can talk about it more.
So with that, I'll just go to Counselor McGrath Smith, and then Counselor Anderson Burgos, and then Counselor Bacon.
So when we started this process, it was interesting thinking about what ways we could move forward to do it. And one of them was by election, one of them was just responding through this alternative process, which was using Mass Enroll Law, Chapter 43(c), for the purpose of changing the position of treasurer from elected to appointed. And that's actually sitting in the jacket in Charter and Rules as an alternative. If we couldn't figure out how to move it forward for an election, it was there as an option. And I think this reconsideration is sort of tied to that same conversation that's been happening all along. I, I agree that I think, I'm very wary of, of taking a power that is in the hands of the voters away from them without them expressing their desire to do that. But I'm also very wary of us, again, bottlenecking and not being able to move forward. So if we postpone the election, or, you know, this ballot question to another election, the two main options is to just postpone it, we could name any date that we wanted. It would drive potentially much lower voter turnout, whether that matters or not, and it would cost around $30,000. Or you postpone an entire year, and it goes to the next municipal election, which slows down everything else that we're trying to do. Right? It really prevents us from doing the financial restructuring that we want to be able to hopefully tackle this term. So I think those two things, like, can we come up with a $30,000? Is that what we want to be doing? Do we want to be doing this as an election with a lower voter turnout? I, I think those are really valuable questions to have. You know, is it worth it to us to move forward with this election, given those two realities? Or look at the second course, the second option, which is doing it without making it a ballot question?
Thank you. I have Counselor...
Went to voter?
Sure. Counsel, what's the?
I believe there was no motion to receive and adopt number 73?
No.
Why are we debating it on the floor now?
Okay. That's a great point. We're just commenting, I guess.
All right, motion to send it to Charter and Rules then, I guess.
Second.
Okay.
All three?
Hmm, sure.
Great.
Apparently that's where it is.
Uh, all right. So motion's been made and seconded to send all three items, eight, twenty-one, seventy-three, to Charter and Rules. All those in favor? Oh, under discussion, I'm sorry.
So I just have a question.
Sure.
Whatever we do, I mean, it's fine to send it to Charter and Rules, but right now, the vote that we took is that the citizens will get to vote on the matter. So we need to be careful that we don't do anything that pushes it so far into the future that that vote is nullified by a failure to act. Personally, I'm hearing our city clerk, and I would be supportive of it going forward, and $30,000 in the scheme of what we have spent as a city government to ensure that the voters have their rights is small money compared to the thousands of dollars I've seen spent otherwise.
Mm-hmm.
So I think whatever we do, we have to guarantee that the vote that we all took will be honored.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Graney?
Just quickly, I think that if we attempt, or if we take the power of the vote out of the hands of the voter, I believe that's an abuse of power on our part.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
I just, it's an observation, since I've gotten into this room and gotten elected, that I, I always hear that we're taking the power away from the voters, and in this case, we're discussing these three items. And when I hear from my constituents, it's never about whether the treasurer is gonna be appointed or elected, or, it's never about that. It's always about safety, 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 safety. Safety is the biggest concern in this city, safety. I had never had received a call, an email, or wouldn't you think if, if a community is like, you're taking our power away from us, that they, as elected officials, that we would hear from these people? So I, I, I can't grasp as to who is that really coming from? That we're taking the power away from, so we're telling the people, hey, we're taking the power away from you. But are we? Because they're not reaching out to us with all hands up in the air saying, how dare you? I've not received one call. It's always about safety, so let's focus on that. Anyways, yeah, let's just send it to committee.
Okay. Counselor Jordan, did you have your hand up?
Well, the only point I wanted to make was just an observation that we've already adopted to have it on this year's ballot. So until we do something otherwise, that's the plan. So I, us, that's, so nothing's been changed as of right now. Now we're gonna go to committee and discuss other options, potentially.
Yes. Sounds like that's what's gonna happen.
But, just one more time.
Yeah, Counselor Bacon and then Counselor McGrath Smith.
I sort of feel like we're putting the clerk in a bind, because right now, based on sending it to committee, she has to prepare the ballot for November, and she's running out of time for that. I'm just pointing that out, because that's what she has to do right now, because nothing has changed. That, just, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor McGrath Smith?
My question was on timeline.
Yep.
And so the next Charter and Rules meeting is September 16th. We could take it up there.
Mm-hmm.
And does that give us enough time to then bring it back to council? So if the meeting for Charter and Rules is the 16th, that would mean that the 17th, we could bring it to full council.
Eighteenth.
Sorry.
Counselor Devine?
Yeah, just to read, I'm not gonna read the whole letter, but on the clerk's letter, it specifically says, she did check with the Commonwealth, there would be a number of potential issues to which the Secretary of the Commonwealth advises against having a ballot question done at the same time as a 2024 election. That doesn't say it's gonna take away from the people's vote. All it's saying is that they advise against doing that. So that's where her letter's coming from, and I think we should pay attention to that.
Okay, thank you. So the motion was made and seconded to send these three items to Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved with that. Okay. Up next, we have item number nine.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
This is from City Clerk Brenna Murphy Leary and Admin Assistant Jeffrey Anderson Burgos. The city council minutes from June 4th, June 18th, June 27th, and then executive session minutes from February 8th, 2021, October 18th, 2022, November 1st, 2022, December 6th, 2022, and December 5th, 2023. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. Speaking only for myself, maybe everybody else has had a chance to read all of these before this meeting, but I have not. So I would support a motion to receive, but not to adopt, because I haven't read them yet.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive these minutes. All those in favor? Oh, wait, under discussion, sorry.
Yeah, briefly, under discussion.
Sure. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, receiving's fine. I did want to just say, though, before we release them, but to the extent, apparently they've already been released, right? But I was always under the impression that the law required the body, before it releases executive session minutes, to have a discussion and a vote to release executive session minutes, right? So my question is, I'm assuming at this stage of the game, one in the world can now see anything that's sitting here on my desk, right? So has the council voted yet to release all these executive session minutes? Because my question is, isn't this, say we said, no, we, the council now votes not to release, isn't the horse already out of the barn?
Sure.
Okay. So I don't know if anybody wants to address that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the law department to weigh in on it, but I see Counselor Bartley's hand first, and then I'll have the law department weigh in. Thank you.
Sure. Well, I definitely want to address that, so...
Sure.
So, and really, it's, it's very unfair to you as, and anyone as a president, because this has got to be guided, you've got to be guided by the law department on this point. I, I'm not gonna need the law department to weigh in, because I can read what the law says pretty clearly, and I'm gonna read that in two seconds. But I've been here, whatever, you went to time. I didn't even know this until this whole thing came up about everybody wanting to get the executive sessions, and I really tip my hat to all those counselors that were clamoring for that, because that's really what prompted me to really start reading the, you know, read the darn law. And it says, "The public body," right here, "shall at reasonable intervals," you know, "from time to time, review the minutes of executive sessions to determine if the provisions in, in here should have, be disclosed or not." So that's up to you, the chair of this committee, at reasonable intervals, to sort of bring this before us. And I, I don't think, I mean, but for having read this, I, I didn't even know it myself. I, I also have another attorney general opinion, determination on point on this exact same word cites the law.
Sure, yeah, we all have that one too, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hopeful that, that we can just receive these now, and that, that down the road, when you think it's right, maybe every six months, we'll review the minutes and figure it out ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like the law department to weigh in, since Counselor Jordan asked a question, and so...
Suspend the necessary rules and have the law department.
Thank you. Attorney Bissonnet or Attorney Mantaloski, I'm not sure who wants to field this one.
Unless Mike wants to chime in, I think that the, the language is that, once disclosure would no longer defeat the purpose of the executive session, then minutes and other records of that executive session must be disclosed, unless they fall within an exception to the public records law or the attorney-client privilege applies.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes, agreed. I believe that is the standard. The point, however, is, haven't they been released at this point now without a vote of the council? Like, it's just put out there to the public, these executive session, and isn't it supposed to be some statement from the law department that these should be sequestered?
So, if I may?
Sure.
There is a communication from the law department about the executive session minutes, and there was, at first, I want to thank Jeffrey for spending all of July working on the executive session minutes, because that was something that he and I have been discussing prior to any complaints filed against myself. So I am thankful, Jeffrey, and for everyone who put the effort in. The law department did review minutes, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but there was a lot of back and forth on what's ready to be released, what's not ready to be released. There's redactions in these minutes, and there's a communication that comes with the, on this agenda about what, what we would release and what we wouldn't. But again, I always stand corrected. I'm never afraid to say that I was wrong, so I would be happy to hear from one of the many lawyers in this room. But Jane, maybe?
Right, so I'm quoting exactly, you know, the statute language, when it says that, "When the purpose for which a valid executive session was held has been served, the minutes, preparatory materials and documents and exhibits..."
Is your mic on?
It's on. It's just not, it's not close enough. I'm gonna fix it. Thank you. Oh, I can hear it's different now.
It is.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Okay. So the quote is from Mass General Laws 30a, Section 22, which says, "When the purpose for which a valid executive session was held has been served, the minutes, preparatory materials and documents and exhibits of the session shall be disclosed, shall be disclosed, unless the attorney-client privilege or one or more exemptions under this clause, or said clause 26 of Section 7 or chapter, of said Chapter 4 applies." So that's the public records that you'd have to disclose. So there's no, the law department did go through these minutes in depth, in detail. There was communication regarding disclosing these minutes, specifically for matters that have been resolved, or there's no longer a need for the executive session to be maintained in secrecy and, or outside the public view. And there are some that are redacted, which are still within litigation or other need for executive session, under the exceptions. So that is why some of the minutes have been released, because it says, "shall disclose," and why some of them have been maintained to be redacted, or not disclosed in their entirety.
Counselor Bacon and then Counselor Jordan?
I thought I still had the floor.
Oh, I didn't realize you still had the floor. Sorry.
Okay. If that's okay.
Great.
Yeah, I'd like to just finish my point, which is that that is the standard, but the, this is the body's executive session minutes. This body needs to take a vote. It could be based on the recommendation of the law department, but only this body, by our vote, can we release these minutes. It's not just that, it's the law department who decides that executive session minutes are released or not. They make a recommendation to us to say, this is why executive session minutes are, now we feel these are ready for release. They consult you, they say, hey, we've got these sets of minutes, and then it should, these should go back before the council for a vote to be released. Then we vote to release. All I'm saying is, maybe it's completely appropriate. I have not personally, like some of the others in the room, I have not read all these documents yet. It's quite extensive. Having said that, and maybe it's completely appropriate that we do release them, but I'm only pointing out process, which is, it has always been my understanding that when we had these situations, the law department would say, these minutes are now available and ready to be released. They would present it to the president. The president would then discuss, hey, we've got all these minutes to be released, and now I want to put it before the body to have a vote to have them released. Then if we vote yes, they're released. What I'm only suggesting now is, if the council turns around and says, these shouldn't have been released, right? We've reviewed it, here's the standard, and we say no, horse is out of the barn. These have already been made public to the world. So I'm just saying, the process has not been followed. And I get it, you know, there's new people and there's whatever, not just the president, but more the, you know, whatever. This is maybe the first batch that we've seen with the current law department. But I'm just saying, for future reference, I would like us to get back to that process when these do have to come before. That, that is a, that is a step in the process. That's all I'm only suggesting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Counselor, or I mean, Attorney Mantaloski, have your hand up?
Thank you. So I just want to clarify that the release of these minutes were in response to a specific request from counsel, a counselor or counselors. So I would like to first just state that, one. Two, I take issue with Counselor Jordan's statement that the law department is somewhat, somehow at, or his allegation or insinuation, that the law department is somehow at fault in this circumstance. We, if you look at Attorney Ball's letter, you say, you see, on your agenda are the following minutes which can be released. So I would like you, I would like to first make that very clear. And thirdly, if you look at the statute, again, 30a, Section 22, "Upon request by any person to inspect or copy the minutes of an executive session or any portion thereof, there needs to be a response within 10 days." The order came in far longer than 10 days ago. The order came in far longer than 10 days ago, and this body was not going to be meeting within that time period. So, while I do understand that there may be some concerns with these minutes now being out in the public, again, there was a request from a counselor or counselors to have them released, and, in their entirety, and the fact that there are still some redactions shows that there was still a need for certain minutes to not be released due to their continuing ongoing nature of the executive session. And as the matters were concluded that were in the executive session, there would be no warrant from the body to withhold them any further. And I think if you, if it was delayed any further, then the body as a whole, and the city, would have some potential legal ramifications with respect to that, because it had, it has a certain statutory requirement to respond.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So the basis of the request for the release of the minutes is the state law, and the state law says that executive sessions are, minutes are to be released no later than the third meeting following the executive session, unless there is a written explanation under attorney-client privilege, or the exceptions as listed in the state law. So that's the basis of the request for the minutes to be provided and released. So, I haven't, like I said, I haven't had a chance to look at all of these, but any of these minutes that are redacted need to have an accompanying written explanation as to what basis they are redacted under, either attorney-client privilege, or one of the other exceptions under state law. So I'm not sure what's redacted in these, like I said, I haven't had a chance to look at all of them yet, but whatever is, has to have an accompanying documentation as to why. Because the public has a right to any information relative to resolved matters of this nature. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before, I have, I have lots of hands up, I have Attorney Bissonnet and Attorney Mantaloski, but I also have Counselor Sullivan. And I also just want to point out item 13.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at it, it was sent to us before, and item 13 is accompanying the release of minutes, and it outlines why things are not being released.
Make a motion to take up item 13, so people will know about it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So with that.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor, what's your point of order?
It's hot in here, can somebody pop the air conditioner on?
Sure, usually when I put the AC on, I'm told to turn it off, if someone wants to put it on, I go for it. No, it's all good. I'm always dying for the AC up here, so, there's no air circulation, but can't do much right, yeah. So, hold, hold that thought, Counselor Rivera, I see you, but first, I have Counselors Sullivan, and then I'll have the law department weigh in. Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, one of the reasons that Counselor Bacon and I filed this order in the first place is, no meetings of any council executive session have been released, to the best of my knowledge, in over eight years. So, all of this, this is about, all of this, nothing for eight years. So, nobody could tell me that some of these cases aren't long solved, long settled, and have never, ever been made public, and that was the reason for filing this.
Thank you. If I may, just because I've been involved in so many email communications on this topic, the, Jeffrey, correct me if I'm wrong, do we have meetings in executive session in 20, what did we find out? Oh. Right. Okay, so, I just want folks to understand that, like, Jeffrey is, so, I have been president for six months, just a friendly reminder, and Jeffrey has been working on this, and so there are minutes, he's trying to find recordings of items, Jeffrey hasn't been here for eight years, I wish, I mean, love ya, but I'm just, you know, I understand everyone's concerns, and we're working on it now, but everything that is being released or has been worked on is from as far back as 2021, because that's at least one Jeffrey could get. So we are working on it, I understand, I've seen the complaints, I, I get it. Anything else you wanted to add, Counselor Sullivan? Sure.
To make my remark perfectly clear, this is not Jeffrey's fault, this is not the current council's fault, this has been going on for years.
Totally, yep.
All we're trying to do is correct something, and, and stop any accusations around the city about things being swept under the carpet and hidden, here it is, it's done, and here's the results.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, I've got, I still do have Attorney Bissonnet and Attorney Mantaloski, do you guys have anything to add?
I, I was just going to add that to have Attorney Balls, I can't figure out how close I'm supposed to be, to have Attorney Balls' letter included for the review as well, as in response to Counselor Bacon's comment, so I'm good.
Okay, then I have Counselor Rivera.
So, for me, I guess, in listening to all of this, it sounds like we're really just trying to clean up a mess that we've had for years, right? And it sounds like, even in that, I have to kind of agree with Counselor Jordan with that one step of, the council kind of has to agree with releasing minutes, we have to kind of vote on that piece, like, I, even if it was that a counselor filed an order for it, like, I never voted to release any minutes, so like, I may not agree, or agree, or I may agree to release it, that piece right there continues the piece of the mess that we're trying to clean up. If, if we're going to clean it up, then we should try to, moving forward, and this is hindsight, everything is 2020, but moving forward, it would make sense that we follow the steps in a way that kind of makes sense procedurally, because it does look like they just chose what they wanted to release and they released it. And I'm not saying, I don't agree, I don't, yeah, I don't have no sides with regards to this, I'm just saying what it looks like. But for the sake of, in the future, like, there should be a procedure that we follow and do it forever, not just the last two or three years, the last eight years, hopefully people after us do it too. Just kind of wanted to point that out, because it kind of sounds like there's a lot of convolutedness right now.
Thank you, Attorney Bissonnet.
Just a point, that in the future, executive session minutes should be first on the agenda in an executive session, where the council can then vote to release or redact those minutes, would then go to the council for full approval. I think what has happened here, and some of the members clamored to get this done, and I want to congratulate and thank Jeffrey, as I think the members should, for all his hard work in getting this done, but it has to be done, it's a requirement, the word is shall. And so, going forward, I think we'll all be looking for any exact minutes, we'll make sure that the agendas are properly noticed, and have the necessary buzzwords that will comply with the exceptions as noted by the SOS and in the statute. And I think going forward, we've got to be a little bit more careful that if these executive session minutes are things that are not resolved, they certainly cannot get on a regular public access agenda. So I take Counselor Jordan's point to heart. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Devine?
Yeah, I think the best thing to do, we, we just got these tonight, I'm sure none of us have read them, I think it's, it's the right thing to do, is just to receive them, give us time to read them.
Yep, that's a motion on the floor.
And do not next, on the agenda.
Great, that's a motion on the floor, Counselor Bacon?
I would just like to also add item 13 to my motion to receive.
Sure. So motion's been made and seconded to receive items nine and 13, and, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 10 is from Personnel Director Kelly Curran, the City of Hoyok Social Media Policy.
Motion received.
Motion to receive?
Could we send that to a committee?
Whatever you would like.
I was thinking, like, Public Service would be probably appropriate, in that, I'm assuming she's sending this to us for a reason, and I know it might be helpful to have a conversation with her as to, you know.
Okay, so send to Public Service?
Unless somebody has another suggestion.
Sounds good.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to send to Public Service, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 11 is from City Solicitor Lisa Ball, legal opinion on voting requirements.
Receive.
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 12, from City Solicitor Lisa Ball, communication regarding litigation and pilot payments at 11 Yale Street.
Receive.
Receive, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
I, I just want to point out that I'm, I'm grateful for the update, we've been asking for this for a little while, and it's good to see that the city government is on top of collection of the pilot payments for the entity at 11 Yale. That's been, I've been asking for it for a while, and Mary Garcia is also doing a great job in terms of staying on top of the pilots overall.
She sure is, yeah, I agree.
So it's, it's something that kind of bothers me a little bit, I don't know about anybody else, but at least we got somebody on top of it.
Yep, thank you. So, motion to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 14 is from City Solicitor Lisa Ball, communication regarding the City of Hoyok Law Department Business Report.
Receive.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 15 is from Assistant City Solicitor Dan Mantaloski, communication regarding heavy commercial vehicle operation on Homestead Avenue in Hoyok.
Be received.
Motion to receive, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Well, no, I, I'd like to send that to, to committee, please, because this is a really important topic, and I'm just grateful that, that Jane is kind of taking, I can't find it, 15, there it is, I read it earlier, and it's just, we've taken the time to sort of, so I want to expand upon this a little.
Sure.
In, in committee.
Okay.
And I just assume send it to DGR, if, just for, just for a discussion in DGR.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to send to DGR. Counselor Bacon, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate this letter being sent, unfortunately, the business owner doesn't seem to be honoring it, so I'm hoping in committee, maybe we can come up with something, I would have said public safety, but DGR is fine as it is. We come up with some.
Public safety makes more sense, you're right.
Kind of a response, or hopefully next steps, because this has been just a chronic.
I'll second her friendly amendment, to send it public.
Well, DGR might take it up quicker.
Well, well, just go to DGR.
I'm, I'm good with where it's going.
I guess we'll go to DGR.
Okay, so we'll go to DGR, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 16, from Attorney Degnan, communication regarding open meeting law from Stephen Superba.
Madam President, can I?
Yep.
Can, can we just take the, that late file I put in, because it goes along with this? It was, it was the Attorney General's determination that the city council did violate the open meeting law. For some reason, that wasn't in our packet, but that's the opinion, so I just add it as late file, so I just want to take that up, and we can receive it.
Second.
I don't know if any counselors want to have a follow-up with the law department on this, but maybe another order, separate order would be good.
Are you recommending we go to a committee?
If, if somebody wants to have a follow-up with the law department.
Are you referring to item 85?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that what it is?
85 it is, yeah.
Yeah, the determination, yeah, that we're, we're in violation of open meeting law.
So the motion was made and seconded to take items 16 and 85?
Yeah, thanks.
As a package, and refer to, did you say to refer to somewhere?
Should we just receive and take it up at the next? Want to send it public? I guess my question, Madam President, is, is does the law department at this stage have an opinion as to action that the council needs to do in response to the finding?
Sure, okay.
85, like, is there something the law department is recommending the council take action on at this point?
Yeah, so, if it's okay with folks, motion to suspend the rules and allow the.
Or moved.
Law department to weigh in, and I'm going to defer it to either Attorney Mantaloski or Attorney Bissonnet. Do you want to weigh in on?
I, I can weigh in on it, yes.
Okay.
I know that Attorney Degnan has been handling this matter, she, and we, her and I conversed prior to this meeting, I know that there has been a supplemental response sent to the Attorney General with respect to this determination, that there are certain things that, with respect to the language, as to the announcement of how they were, the executive session was on the agenda. So, I believe there, there wasn't a requirement, though, from that Attorney General's decision that the body make an announcement regarding what was included in the February 6th, 2024 executive session meeting, and I can, I can speak, that was, because it was from the law department, a litigation update regarding an MCAD complaint filed with respect to the Hoyok Police Department. So, I think we can check that box, and tell the Attorney General that we have now announced that in open session, but I know there was a follow-up, I don't know if there is going to be any further discussion with the Attorney General on it, but I do know that the, there was a response from our office, based upon what we've reviewed, everything looked compliant, but we still want to make sure that the Attorney General's happy, obviously, so, and we want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure the public isn't informed pursuant to Mass General Laws, so.
Thank you, Attorney Mantaloski, Counselor Bartley?
I'm just going to say, I'm just referring to Public Service, and maybe we can have a talk, talk it out there a little bit more.
Okay.
And have the law department come in, and we can maybe talk it out some.
Okay, so.
That's my motion.
The motion has been made to send items 16 and 85 to Public Service.
Second.
Second, under discussion, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I'll support that, but I, I will just say, I made a brief, when we had a vote here on $150,000 transfer, in light of these opinions, okay, from the Attorney General's office, saying that we should have stated what was the matter before us that we went into executive session with, I think the one sentence that Counselor Jordan stated relative to the matter that we appropriated $150,000 for, was uniformly unequivocally appropriate, what I did, okay, in alluding to a matter relative to the police department, no names given or anything, in light of what was just stated a moment ago, and what's found in item 13 of the, of the city solicitor's office, and in the substance of this letter from the Attorney General's office, so, some fanfare was made of my one sentence, publicly and privately, and I just wanted on the record that 100% appropriate, thank you.
Okay, well, since I was the one who said that, I mean, you know.
No, it wasn't actually, it wasn't actually you, you.
But that's okay, thank you.
You're just piled on after, but the main person knows.
I just piled it on after, okay, got it, thank you so much, anything else, anyone? Attorney Mantaloski?
I just wanted to respond to that, and, and I know, I saw that meeting, I watched it happen, right, so I'm familiar, and I think, based upon the secrecy of executive session, and the, and the reasoning why council goes into executive session, or anybody goes into executive session, it is extremely prudent to be as generalized as you can. it is extremely prudent to be as generalized as you can. Do, you know, and I don't think it was really anybody's, quite honestly, anybody's fault at that, in that meeting. But I think it was just a very, and I completely understand it, a very big nervousness, essentially, on the part of the body to release too much information, because we didn't want to violate open meeting law from that side. So I think that, you know, it is always prudent to be more generalized when you're talking about items that have happened, or things that have happened in executive session, or things that may relate to that. Um, and to try to keep that as, um, limited as you can. So I think, you know, there were concerns by counselors, and I think that was very prudent. I understand. Counselor Jordan, you wanted to have a little bit more specificity, so, I mean, I think everybody in turn was trying to comply with the open meeting law. It just didn't, it was a difference of opinion as to how you do that. So I, I just wanted to say that I do, I do think both, I think both the counselors that had issue, with how much was disclosed, and I understand your position, Counselor Jordan, so I just, I just wanted to make that clear, that I think in the end, prudency should always win over more specifics in that type of situation. Thank you.
Great. Moving on, we're going to send these, the motion was to send these
To Public Service.
To Public Service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to take up items seventeen and eighteen as a package and send those to Public Service, too?
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Made and seconded to send items, uh, seventeen and eighteen as a package to Public Service. All those in favor?
Aye. And could you read those items?
Sure, thank you, sorry. Um, seventeen is from Attorney Kathleen Degnan, communication regarding the open meeting law complaint filed by Counselor Bacon. And eighteen is, uh, the open meeting law complaint filed by Counselor Bacon. Both will be, uh, sent to Public Service.
Thank you.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item eighteen from Counselor Howard Graney, clarification on vote of municipal budget, and
Be received.
To receive and comment?
Sure, so, hold on one second, let me just grab it.
Can we make a motion also to send, have the clerk or our assistant send a copy to the Hoyok Sun?
Sure. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, well, hold on, we have like too many, would you like to comment on this, Counselor Graney?
Yes, quickly, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to say that, uh, the addition of the Hoyok Sun had me on the front page voting in favor of the municipal budget this year. I was a no vote on the municipal budget. I called them, I got a, uh, a clarification, and they clarified it, uh, to, uh, the following week in Hoyok Sun on page three. So I just want to let the public know that I was a no vote on the municipal budget this year. And, uh, I believe our, uh, our reporters and our, our, our media should always report accuracy with our votes, especially on such important issues as the municipal budget, and of course, our, our, our tax, our tax settings, which will come in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion was made, uh, to receive and send a copy to, uh, the Hoyok Sun. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item twenty is a communication from Mary Monahan regarding, uh, Board and the Ad-Hoc Committee, uh, from the Board of Public Works.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to take this up as a package with number, uh, down here.
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one.
Okay.
Eighty-one, uh, with the objective of eighty-one to, uh, receive and adapt tonight.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded to take up items twenty and eighty-one as a package, um, with the intent to, uh, take final action tonight on eighty-one. So, item twenty is from Mary Monahan, the communication regarding the Board and Ad-Hoc Committee of the Board of Public Works. And eighty-one is a transfer request, um, filed by Counselor Sullivan, ordered that there be appropriated transfer of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, um, in fiscal year twenty twenty-five as follows, from capital stabilization, two hundred, sewer stabilization, fifty thousand, or two, sorry, two hundred thousand, sewer stabilization, fifty thousand, to sewer professional services, uh, two hundred thousand, and sewer legal services, five hundred thousand. Um, Counselor Sullivan?
Fifty thousand.
Jeez, I'm sorry, fifty thousand.
We'll take it.
Not trying to pull a fast one, I promise. Just a typo on my end. Go ahead, Counselor Sullivan.
Okay, so the, the reason for this is, right now, um, we, we have a committee, an ad hoc committee, that's been looking into this twenty-year contract. This is a hundred eighty million dollar, twenty-year contract for the city. Uh, we've had a great team working on it. Um, the current contract is expiring. What we, what we would like to, and it has a year to go, but this is a very complicated, long-term, and very important contract for the city and for the future, uh, probably for residents, uh, long after I'm gone. There may be a few other counselors here that are getting up there in years, but, uh, what we've got is, um, a timeframe here to get an RFP out, and we need the, um, both the legal and the technical help to get together a contract that's really going to be appropriate. Uh, the, the contract that we've been working under for twenty years, uh, to put it in very simple terms, was about flush your toilet, run your dishwasher, and the stuff goes off, and hopefully it doesn't go in the river. And we got, we got rid of the city employees, and, uh, we hired an outside contractor to do that, and that's what's been going on for twenty years. Uh, we, we don't want to just put that same thing out. A lot has changed over the twenty years. And we'd, we'd like to get this out, the RFP for this new service, by, uh, late fall, uh, December, at the very, very latest. So, right now, the reason I'm trying to push this forward tonight is it gives us another thirty days to work with this team to put together a really good contract. Now, the, the complexities of, complexities of, uh, what's going on and the need for these services, first of all, the first contract, which is, which is just a horrendous document, uh, cost over a million dollars. So, we're nowhere near approaching those kind of numbers. For something now that exists, uh, in what we're thinking about in a new contract, involves things that were never there before. Uh, regulatory concerns, environmental concerns, financial and societal needs and expectations of what happens in a wastewater treatment plant. And also, now we're seeing great economic benefit, the possibilities for great economic development, and believe it or not, job creation, green energy, um, addressing climate change threats. Uh, and, uh, realistically, right now, expanded funding options that can come our way, both through the state level and the federal government. So, uh, we, we really need to throw some resources at this, and buy ourselves as much time as possible. Uh, and the extra thirty days right now will really help. If, if we can get this done tonight, um, it adds, like I said, it's, it's not going to go to committee, then be discussed, then come back. You just cut down our timeframe on what we can do. Working, we're already working with a crew of people, uh, I shouldn't say people, but the legal team that we've been working with for the last eighteen months has been outstanding. It's Penone, Lopes, Devero, and O'Gara, and the Halleman Group. The technical team is Hazen and Sawyer, right? And they've been fantastic. Some of, some of the things, um, that are really complicated, and I, I don't want to, uh, belabor everybody with it, but the, the need for this kind of technical support, we have, uh, certain new changes in environmental regulation that we really need to, we don't know what they're going to be, but we're trying to incorporate in it how we will handle this in the future, should the need arise, right? So it's, it's not a question then. As one, for example, it's, uh, PFAS, uh, which is, I, I hope everybody's aware of that. But this is also in our wastewater. Uh, it's in what we discharge into the river. So how are, how are we going to handle ourselves? How are we going to protect ourselves from this? And how do we incorporate, this is just one of the technical pieces of expertise we need. One of the big economic drivers that we're hoping to bring in is something the city's never done before. Uh, other cities, uh, here in the Northeast have done it. Uh, the committee toured a, uh, plant i- in Boston, uh, even though its technology is somewhat behind the times, they use an anaerobic digester. Uh, this is a very technical, uh, field. We, we need the assistance on how to size the right-size digester for Hoyok. And, um, these things, uh, what, what comes out, uh, West of Rhode Island has one, for example, also, which is a city the size of Hoyok. We, we toured Boston's, which was interesting, as you can imagine, quite a bit larger. But the products, uh, if you can imagine this, uh, the anaerobic digesters produce methane, which can be used to produce electric, uh, electrical power through, uh, generators. Uh, produces oxygen, produces nitrogen, produces CO2. All of it's saleable product. And the end product, after the anaerobic digester has done its job, can go off to fertilizer factories and be sold, instead of right now going to a wastewater treat, uh, not wastewater, a, a landfill, and us paying a tipping fee and having it hauled off in a diesel truck. So it's, it's all very, uh, complicated. We want to do it right. We need, we need the extra time. And, um, I'm, I'm free to field any questions right now, if anybody's got anything or any concerns, or things we'd like to address.
I have a few folks in line to follow up, so I've got Counselor Devine, Counselor McGrath Smith, and Counselor Bartley. I also just want to recognize, though, that I am going to need to entertain a motion if we're doing this to pass the first reading, so.
So moved.
Motion to pass the first reading?
Motion's been made, uh, to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, we do the discussion now, and then we'll do that, okay? Took a nice month off, it's been good, so, all right. Counselor Devine, and then Counselor McGrath Smith, and then Counselor Bartley.
Um, I did attend the meeting, um, that was held at the Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, I'm very impressed by the Ad-Hoc Committee and what Counselor Sullivan just, um, spoke about. Uh, this is something that is definitely needed. I think we should pass it tonight. They've worked really, really hard, um, on this, and the, um, I, I don't know what else to say other than I think we need to pass this, just based on what Counselor Sullivan has said tonight, um, because he's been there. And he's been there with the rest of the Ad-Hoc Committee, and I would like to thank them for their efforts and their communications, and I would urge everybody to pass item eighty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have, um, Counselor McGrath Smith, and then Counselor Bartley.
I'm in full support of the work that the Ad-Hoc Committee is doing. Um, I think there's some really exciting possibilities, and also just some really important new ideas that we can address, um, through this process. I do have a couple of questions, um, which I know we would, you know, handle in a finance meeting, but because we're not going to do that potentially, I'm just going to ask them now, and maybe we have answers, maybe we don't. But I would love to know exactly how much is currently in capital stabilization? And if the fee is two hundred fifty thousand dollars for legal and professional services, I would just love a little bit of a sense of, how does that break down? If there's different firms that we're working with, is it twenty thousand to this firm, eighty thousand to this firm? Is there, is there that sort of clarity at this point?
Counselor Sullivan, go ahead.
Yep. Uh, no, we're working with one legal team, all right? Uh, and the request on that is for fifty thousand, not two fifty. And the technical help is all coming from, uh, Hazen and Sawyer, and that's the two hundred thousand piece. That's how it's broken down. I can't answer what's in capital stabilization. You'd have to ask the treasurer, somebody else.
Auditor.
Tanya.
Auditor.
I don't think we have either with us right now.
I'll make this comment, though. To me, it, it doesn't matter. This, this is a, uh, a generational, uh, item, and it, it's a hundred eighty million dollar contract, ballpark. Could be more, doubt it'll be less, you know?
Do you have any, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, and then Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I, I guess, uh, I, I did speak with Counselor Sullivan, I, I've seen, Mike knows how much I respect him. So, uh, my, my first comment is, this is filed under Mike's name, just, I think there's a similar, there's another where filed, another counselor's name, about a transfer. Uh, as we know, the, the mayor can only initiate these things. Now, Mike told me that, that the mayor's initiated this one, so I, I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with, with that. But when I, when I see just a name like this, other than the, than the, than the person running the Finance Committee, I, I, it just raises a red flag. But Mike did confirm it's for the, uh, it's based on the mayor, so I just want to point that out. Second off, just for any other people interested, that the lawyer and the consultant, as described, they would not have to be put out to bid because they're exempt, they're exempt under thirty B, so in case anybody wants to realize that. My, my biggest problem is, this is a two-to-one vote in the Board of Public Works. So, I mean, we got a one-sided opinion, and that's, that's great. But I, I didn't attend the Board of Public Works meeting, and I read the minutes, but I mean, they, they didn't really go into in-depth. I, and saving thirty days, I don't think is justification for, for, as Mike said, a hundred eighty million dollar contract. Lastly, and I know that the city engineer is maybe not directly involved, but city engineer should, we should have a city engineer, a full-time one, looking these things over on our behalf. Whether or not the city engineer is going to be the final determinant, make the final determination, I, I don't know. But to not have somebody with, with that kind of, uh, credential, uh, looking this over, uh, to me, I, I, I think this is a rushing something, spending a lot of money on a very massive project, just to get it out the door. I, I don't see the reason why we can't continue to, continue contract for at least another thirty, at least a little period of time, and have a meeting where some of us who didn't attend these meetings couldn't, we could at least watch them in city council and, and see what they have to say. So, uh, consequently, um, I, I'm, I'm not going to vote for this transfer tonight. Not that I don't support it, I would just like to hear more, especially from the, uh, opposite side.
Okay, I'm going to let Counselor Sullivan respond, and then Counselor Bacon.
Yeah, so, uh, if I could, Counselor Bartley, uh, let's see, the, the question's, number one, uh, yeah, well, there is no city engineer, and there's no prospect of one, and this could go on for who knows how much longer. But the, the fact is, this contract is, uh, just shy, just, just over one year away from expiring, all right? And the votes already, the vote that was taken was to put out an RFP, to not extend the existing contract. The extension of an existing contract would have been five years, all right? To make any of the capital, uh, improvements and stuff, to, to have a operator making those kind of capital improvements during that short period of time, and not having a ten-year contract to do it, it just, uh, is not feasible. So, uh, I, I hope those, uh, answer at least two of the questions. Was there a third one, uh, that I missed?
No, you did good, Mike.
Okay.
So that's, that's the logic behind it anyways.
Okay. I have Counselor Bacon, and then Counselor Devine.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I have a lot of respect for the work that Counselor Sullivan and the Ad-Hoc Committee has done relative to this. But we just sent a thirty thousand dollar expense to a committee relative to a citizens ballot initiative because we were concerned about the expense. And I really think we have to do our due diligence and understand what the parameters and what we're going to get for the two hundred and fifty thousand is, and then what the future costs related to it might be. I know there aren't guarantees. I know nothing is in stone, but it's a heavy lift to just try to do a committee meeting in this body, which we've had others shut down rapidly on that in the past. on that in the past, saying we're going to do this work in committee. And I just think we need to do it the right way. I think we can expedite it. I think, you know, I think the committee chair could move it and expedite it. And I'm in favor of moving things expeditiously, but this just feels too much pressure and too rushed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have Counselor Devine, and then Counselor Sullivan. Oh, do, sorry, do you want to, are you responding specifically?
I wanted to mention, one of the questions that came up. I checked with the city clerk when I saw this order, why my name wasn't on it as finance chairman, and it was the city auditor who put this in for Counselor Sullivan. And the other thing is, I really think, based on that meeting that I went to, that a lot of people probably could not attend, for whatever reasons, this is the right thing to do, and to do it as soon as possible. I don't know when I can have a finance meeting on this. I'm already scheduled to have one on the 12th with a lot of information. So that's all I want to say. I understand people's concerns, we're not trying to rush anything through, but it has to be done. Has to be done.
Okay. So Counselor Sullivan, and then I'm hoping we can go for it.
Trying to respond to Counselor Bacon's concerns.
Sure, of course.
The expediting it, the very most expeditious thing we can do is going to be add 30 days to this if we don't act on it tonight. If it goes, if Counselor Devine could get it into the next finance meeting, it won't be in front of us again until September.
Alright.
Alright? And that's if everybody, if there's no further delay.
You can have a meeting?
I don't want to be, or put the other members of this ad hoc committee, for those of you who don't know the ad hoc committee, or haven't listened to any of the meetings, or followed any of it.
Can we?
Have a meeting here?
Have a, I just, the side conversations, I know it's, no, no one's fighting, I know no one's fighting, but I'm like, I just, it's super distracting for the folks that are talking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Keitner, who's an engineer, Brian Beauregard, who we all know, Andy Fisk from American Rivers. It's been a very qualified committee. Mary Monahan has done a fantastic job, she's put in countless hours on this. The entire team, members of the DPW, all took their own times to tour these wastewater treatment plants in Boston, to do their research and homework. As far as the dollar amount, it's not the intention to go out and spend $250,000. We need that, we don't know how much more detail we'll get into, we feel this is enough to cover any possibilities. The number could come in south of that. We just need to be able to get about the business and be able to do what is necessary in a very short timeframe to get an appropriate RFP out to address these concerns.
Counselor Graney, and then Counselor Jordan.
Just quickly, through the chair to Counselor Sullivan, what are the absolute negatives if we don't pass this tonight?
The absolute negative is this, we don't get an RFP out in time, we don't have time to analyze the respondents to it, and the current contract expires in September of '25, and we've got nobody running our wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
So good luck flushing your toilets.
Alrighty. On that note, Counselor Jordan.
I will say, of the options that we had of essentially give them another contract, give them an extension of the contract for five years, theoretically, there's a 2A to that, which would have been modified, some sort of negotiated 18-month, two-year deal other than five years, or go out to RFP and have a full bid process, which you're likely, hopefully, to get three vendors to apply. Based on the conversations I've had, there's likely Viola and at least two others that will hopefully apply for this, that are pretty aggressive about applying. I personally think the committee came up with the right decision, which was to do the RFP. I do support that decision. I think it's the right decision. It creates a transparent process. You've got some really smart people on this committee. Couple points. One is, you know, why didn't this get in front of the council back in June, so that we're not here having to? Because I guess the concern that some counselors have is, it's, people are doing their thing, and they view us as sort of this perfunctory, just come in, tell them it's urgent, ching, ching, and send us on the way, like, we're just like a nothing in this process, even though we're a huge thing in this process.
Okay, I know you don't like to get interrupted, but, you know, Counselor, I like to handle these, you're throwing a bunch of questions, if I can handle them one at a time.
Okay. So I guess the one is, the first one wasn't a question, it was just a comment, that I agree with the decision on RFP. The second, the second, I guess my first question then is, why August 6th with no notice? And it's actually, with all fairness, this is two pages, one page is a form letter that says the ad hoc committee, and then the other one's like about a page and a quarter, on something that involves a potentially 20-year contract loaded with details, that, I think it might be in a thousand, currently about a thousand-page contract that's up for renewal. And, you know, this doesn't exactly inspire, I agree with the result, but that's because I did my own homework. What I'm just saying is, like, this didn't give me a world to work with, but please go ahead.
So the answer to the question is, why it comes to you in August and not in June, is it took us that long, and the complexities of the whole thing, we were struggling with trying to extend it, extend it, extend it, and what the roadblocks were, and what the problems were with the extending it. And it really took us until a week ago to really decide, nope, we really, really have to put this out to RFP. That was a big, that was an internal debate for almost a year. And it went back and forth, back and forth, and finally, we reached a conclusion that the best path forward was to go directly to the RFP.
Okay. Again, agree with you on the result. I guess my only point was, they've had it for a year, year and a half, and it's, we're only budgeting 30 minutes for council discussion. You know, I mean, that's the point, that some would argue that it should have been contemplated in the timeline, that this would be submitted to the council, sent to finance, have a real hearing on a major issue, have a discussion, and then the council would vote. And now it's, if you don't pass it tonight, you can't flush your toilets. So, I mean, I think that's not quite the way it should work, so hopefully you agree.
That's not, but the question that was asked of me, what would happen at the end of this contract a year from now, if we had nobody operating our wastewater treatment plant? And what we're after here is the funds necessary for the technical assistance and legal assistance to formulate an appropriate RFP, alright? This is, this is not a process for council debate. It has to do with, we put in, we put in an anaerobic digester. We need the technical assistance to tell us what size anaerobic digester? What is the volume of oxygen it's going to put off? What is the volume of methane? Is that enough methane to power a generator? What size is that generator going to be? How many megawatts of electricity you can produce? How much, how many megawatts can we, and I can go on and on like this for an hour, and tell you, this is the kind of technical assistance we need. We need the legal assistance, tell us what happens with some of the equipment, who owns it, who doesn't own it? Is it the city's? Is it the current contractors? Does it go with the new contract? What happens with the employees? There's a whole bunch of issues to be addressed in this RFP. And that's what it's about, and these are not council debatable issues.
Alright, so I'm now, I mean, I'm trying to be respectful of the fact that this is our one meeting in August, I'm not trying to, you know, let this go on forever. I can see and hear everyone's comments, so I just want us to, I mean, either we have a couple more, I have Counselor Bacon up next, and we move this forward, or we send it to committee and we don't. Like, that's one or the other, so, because...
On the motion? On the motion.
It's, I'd like to finish my, I have one question left, if I may.
Well, I had on the motion.
Yep.
I mean...
Alright, that's fine. No, 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 let's, no, that makes it easier for me, because then it makes my vote very easy.
Well, I'm not trying to make your vote very easy, I'm just, you guys say I'm not consistent with, like, implementing things, and then I try to be consistent, and then I'm not consistent, and it's not good enough, so I'm just trying to...
Yeah, President, may I?
Yeah, of course.
In Counselor Jordan's...
I withdraw my on the motion.
Yes.
What?
What?
I withdraw my, I said on the motion, I'll withdraw it. It is 8:41.
Okay, alright, 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 alright. She withdrew her on the motion. Counselor Sullivan, then Counselor Jordan, then Counselor Bacon, we'll all go.
I don't think it's fair to put out an on the motion while another counselor still has the floor.
Yeah, but it is within everyone's right. It is, it is.
Been done very, a lot of times.
Alright.
May I ask my one question?
Go for it, yep.
May I answer?
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh my gosh. Are you guys serious right now?
What did I do? I just, I thought you said yes.
I just say yes, and may I answer when you ask?
Yes, okay, go ahead. Counselor Jordan, and then Counselor Sullivan will respond to your question.
My only one is on the money piece, since that's the big thing that we're voting on, is, is it going to be just the $250,000? Or is it, like, that's the ceiling, right? This RFP won't cost the city more than $250,000? Or is there going to be other funds beyond what's just transferred here?
That is, that is the ceiling, and as I stated earlier, we don't expect it to reach that ceiling, we need, we like that security...
So that's the max?
That's the max.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All set, Madam President?
Alright, on the motion, we're done, we're good. The, I need to hear, that was the, god, it's been so long. Yeah, we were still on the first reading, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Let me just find the actual order. So motion to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the financial transfer request.
President, since we're on the second reading and we can have discussion, I would like to make the point I wanted to make in the last...
Okay, I mean, alright, so under discussion.
Thank you. So my point was, this, all of this discussion should have been happening in committee, which we've had that discussion five times in this chambers, and that there's one committee chair in this room, I'm sure, that would be willing to host the meeting in a timely manner, to move the thing, instead of us sitting here now for how long? And we're on item, what, 20 out of 80-something?
Great, is that it?
I want to refer it to committee.
Great, and I think that's exactly what's about to happen.
Okay.
No, not necessarily.
Well, we're going to vote on it, that's all I know, okay? Great. Yes, who is that? Who said my name? Anyone else? On the motion, this is, if you're voting yes, unless I hear a motion that someone wants to send it to committee.
That's my motion.
I'm literally, that wasn't your motion, though, so I'm just, I'm trying to hear...
Well, she just motioned, made a motion, I seconded it.
Madam President, I'm probably not going to be able to have a finance meeting on this until September.
Okay, then that's the decision. Alright, so we'll vote on it tonight. Do, okay.
I'm confused.
If you're not going to have, either way, it's going to go to finance, you take it up in finance, one you can take it up. If that's the motion that was made by Counselor Bacon and seconded by Counselor Bartley, to send it to finance committee...
No, I think, Madam, point of order, I think you just, she just made a motion to send it to committee. If the chair doesn't want to take it up, then I'm sure there's plenty of other chairs that would happily take it.
No, 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 stop. Honestly, honestly.
Stop, oh, okay.
No, I'm just saying that you guys are throwing out 42 different suggestions, this is unreal. So, there was a motion to pass the second reading.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So we're going to do that, because that was what was made. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
No.
Devine.
Yes.
Givner. Graney.
Oh.
Jordan.
Yes.
McGrath Smith.
Yes.
Raffi Rambeletti.
Yes.
Acasio. Israel Rivera.
What's the vote, Carmen?
Oh, sorry.
I, um...
I didn't hear Carmen's vote.
No, I didn't, I didn't vote, because I, first of all, because of the confusion, I don't know what was happening, so...
So, what I said was, if you're voting yes, you are voting to approve the financial transfer that is before you, which is item 81. Item 81 is, item 81 is a transfer request for $250,000 from capital stabilization and sewer stabilization to sewer professional services and sewer legal services. So if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the transfer for item 81.
I don't have page 81, so, I couldn't read it in all the confusion, so I don't have that 81.
You don't have 81?
No. And then I didn't really understand anything, because of all the confusion, everybody talking at the same time, I didn't know what was happening, so. I really didn't want to vote on something that I, it was confusing, sorry.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Counselor Graney?
Can we just move to reconsider the vote and start all over again?
Well, we have to finish this vote.
Can you do that in the middle? You can't do that in the middle of a vote. Like, I know I don't know anything, but I know things, so you can't do that in the middle of a vote. Got it? Okay? So, thank you for the suggestion. I think what will end up happening is, there's an opportunity to do that after this. Am I wrong? Great. I don't, I don't know what I'm supposed to do if a counselor doesn't vote, because I've been told that everyone has to vote. Am I wrong?
No, you're right, that's in the rules. Everybody has to vote, but, you know, my old adage was, when in doubt, vote no. And if you, unless you're really for it, I've just voted yes, but I'm not in doubt. But I'm just saying, you know, you do what you think is right. This is on adoption of the $250,000 for the approval of the money that they need for the consultants to do the RFP. If you're in favor of doing that, so that they can put this out to an RFP for the sewer issue, then vote yes. If you're against them doing that, then you would vote no. Does that hopefully help? And it's 81 on the agenda, is the, where it's coming from.
Well, I guess I'm going to vote no, because I don't have page 81, and I didn't understand majority of the other stuff you guys were saying, because everybody was talking at the same time, so.
Okay.
Because I have to vote.
Okay.
Israel Rivera?
Um, yes.
Jenny Rivera? Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Seven yays, four nays.
With that, it does not pass?
I believe, I believe that this transfer only requires a seven vote.
Yep.
Our old friend, section 22.
Absolutely not, two-thirds.
Two readings.
Stop, everyone stop, everyone stop. Seriously? I'm running the meeting, and we have Attorney Bissinette. Have a little respect for me, okay, guys? Thank you. I'm trying to respect all of you. Thanks. Attorney Bissinette, how many votes do we need?
Three-thirds of those present would be needed to pass the mayor's financial order.
Three-thirds of those present would be needed to pass the mayor's financial order through all its stages, first reading and second reading. That is part of the charter.
So, seven votes.
So, he's right. So, it didn't, seven to four is not two-thirds.
So it does not pass?
Does not pass.
Okay.
What Mike said is correct.
Well, alright, great. Thanks.
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
I just wanted to, I will try to get into finance, but I will not be told that I wasn't gonna put it into finance, okay?
Okay.
I do my job in the finance committee, and everybody knows it, and I won't be insulted. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay.
Enough is enough.
That's enough. We're done. Got it. Everyone is, everyone is capable of having a conversation with each other outside of council chambers. And I encourage you all, if you have someone in this room that you really don't get along with, and you really can't find it in your heart to try and get along with each other, everyone just go, go pick up the phone and talk to each other. Honestly, we're all here for the same reason. We all care about this city. I was really hoping that after a month off, we could all maybe, maybe try to get along for like, I don't know, couple hours. So, with that, I'm gonna keep moving forward on this agenda. I am done hearing from folks on this. Thank you so much.
Madam President, I hate to tell, do this, but could you take up, can we take up item number eighty-seven? Uh, I believe Kelly's been on, on-
Kelly Curran?
Room for quite a while.
Um, motion's been made to take item eighty-seven out of order. Uh-
Madam President?
Yes?
Not to be a pain, but I think we need to vote to send it to committee. We only just did the-
Oh, thank you. Okay. I'm just having so much fun up here.
I'll just make a motion to send it to finance.
Okay, so the motion's been made to reconsider?
There you go. I was gonna about to-
Thank you so much. No, I got it. Motion's been made to reconsider the vote and send to finance committee.
Otherwise, it's dead.
It's dead.
Yep, that's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And just for any clerical clarity-
Excuse me. I, I'm sorry, are you-
Yes, I, point of order.
Did you ask, did you ask that?
I asked a point of order.
No, you didn't. I'm sorry, I'm not crazy. I didn't hear you say point of order.
Oh, I just said to clarify, but I guess I can formally make it a point of order.
Okay.
Point of order. Just so we're clear, we're mo, we're voting to reconsider both readings.
Both readings.
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to send to finance.
Motion to send the item we just reconsidered to send to finance?
Yep, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Up next, we said, uh, there was a motion to take item, please, are we, are we serious? Stop. Honestly, guys, do I need to call recess? I'm kidding. I'm not, I'm like, I'm not, I'm not even kidding. Can we move forward like adults? I know you guys can. Please, please, please. It's so hard for me to do my job up here when I can't stop hearing you all. Like, honestly.
Motion to take up item twenty-one and receive?
No, there was a motion to take up-
Oh, we're going, oh, I didn't realize. I'm sorry.
Eighty-seven, because Kelly Curran is here, and this order is about her, so-
Motion to suspend the rules to go to item eighty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All moved, um- Item eighty-seven, um, is filed by myself. It is a transfer request for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of forty thousand eight hundred dollars, um, from Personnel Head Admin Clerk to Personnel Temp Seasonal Help. Um, I was contacted by the mayor and Kelly, uh, Curran, the head of HR, who, um, who asked if we could file this, um, just knowing that we won't have another full council meeting until September. Kelly Curran is patiently waiting on the line. Um, Kelly, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Um, just in case folks didn't get to read it, it's just a request to transfer from my head admin clerk position that's currently vacant to my temp seasonal line, so that I can have my, um, the person who's currently interning in my office, who is amazing and doing great work, work temporarily, um, when she's not in school, which is a couple days a week. So, um, you know, she can't be hired as a full-time employee, so I have to move it to the temp, um, seasonal line, so she could work while she's finishing her senior year in college.
Motion to refer to finance, under the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to refer to finance. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Item twenty-one, we did already. Um, item twenty-two, uh, a communication, um, from, uh, Architecture E.L., um, uh, from Marco Crisanti about the city council chambers' plan and memo and sketches. Um, just wanna, Counselor Bartley?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to receive, but if I could just get a sec on that, I just wanna make a question to the chair.
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded to receive.
Can I just address you directly, because I, I, I don't know where this originated, but it's really good. And I, what was, what does the chair wanna do with this?
So, um, I was wondering if we could send it to DGR.
Motion to send to DGR.
Second.
Great.
That was easy.
Motion's been made and seconded to send to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Um, item twenty-three is a communication from Christopher Gothier regarding the Victory Theater.
Receive.
Uh, motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, twenty-four is a petition filed by various, uh, residents, a letter regarding maintaining all quality-of-life policing methods.
Receive and send to public safety.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and send to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, we did, did we do twenty-five? No, we didn't.
Um, yeah, Madam President-
Motion to take up twenty-five and twenty-six as a package and send it to public service with the other ones?
Thank you, yep.
Motion's been made and seconded to take item twenty-five and twenty-six up as a package and send to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item twenty-seven is a grant report, uh, Mass Cultural Council, uh, Capital Facilities Fund.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Uh, twenty-eight is another grant report filed by, uh, about the firefighter safety equipment grant, Department of Fire Services.
Motion to receive.
Should've been made and seconded to receive. All those in favor?
Motion to take twenty-nine and thirty as a package.
Second.
And receive them both.
Motion has been made and seconded to take items twenty-nine and thirty as a package. Um, the twenty-nine is, uh, Hoyok Development Authority Minutes from March twentieth, April seventeenth, and April twenty-fifth, and thirty is from the minutes from the Historic Commission Meeting from the April eighth meeting. Um, motion's been made to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, petitions, item thirty-one.
I'll make a motion, Miss Madam President, to suspend our rules and approve this so long as everything's paid up.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, the thirty-one is the petition of Emma Hughes, renewal of an, uh, home occupation um, from mass makers face painting at twenty-two Bassett Road. Um, motion's been made to approve, um, pending that all, um, uh, everything is updated and current. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Um, going to reports of, oh, President's report. Okay, um, so, Counselor Givner's not here today because it's her birthday, so I just wanna wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Oh, yes, happy birthday.
God, she was born. Um, thank you to the amazing team at Fiesta's Patronales. This past weekend was an incredible festival. Um, a lot of awesome volunteers who helped make this event possible. Um, the mayor of Salinas, our sister city, came to visit. I got to meet the city council president of Salinas again. Um, great people. Um, the mayor hosted a meeting with them, um, some softball players from Salinas, and the San Patrick's Parade Committee. It was just a really overall great weekend, so thank you to everyone who made it happen, the DPW, Police Department, Fire Department, the CERT team, like, everyone, so many people, sponsors. It was just an awesome, awesome weekend. Um, the Puerto Rican Parade is Sunday, September fifteenth, in Springfield, and the mayor needs us to RSVP. So, if you want to let, um, you can just, you can email me if you want, or, um, Jeffrey, um, and let us know. I don't have the time yet, but in the past, it's been like, we meet there at ten o'clock or so, um, and then we wait to line up and go, so, um, hopefully, folks can attend. Um, one thing I did wanna mention that we have talked about before, the library, we were notified, and I, I don't know if other people were, that, um, they did get their tax exempt status back up, so that's great. Um, there's a Purple Heart Flag Raising tomorrow, August seventh, at ten a.m. here at City Hall. You're all invited to attend. Um, congratulations to Joe McGivern, our friend, on retiring finally. Um, we're proud of you and excited to get our parking spot back, uh, in the deck. Um, and I wanted to remind people that our next meeting, there's, there's two Wednesday meetings in September, so just a reminder that it's Wednesday, September fourth, and Wednesday, September eighteenth. Um, and I last, I, I wanted to, I don't, if anyone else has other folks that they want to, um, do this for, I just, since we've been together the last time, um, it's been a tough summer for a lot of people, so I did just want to have a moment of silence and observation of a few people, but Dexter Ortiz, um, is a good friend of, um, uh, Counselor Rivera, and others, so many other people in this community. Um, and then, more recently, um, Barbara Brezneren, um, Pat Brezneren's wife, um, recently passed, so if others have, um, Counselor Graney?
Yeah, I'd like a moment of silence for Dick Quinville, who was a longtime volunteer at the Hoyok Senior Center, veteran, longtime Hoyok resident. Uh, his, his wake and funeral was this past Friday, so a moment of silence for Dick, please.
Thank you. So a moment of silence for those folks, and anyone else that I didn't mention.
Madam President?
Sure.
Um, Barbara Brezneren is also Rory's grandmother. Rory, Rory Casey.
Oh, thank you, our city treasurer. Thanks, everyone. Oh, and, I'm sorry, the, we also got a thank you letter from the Lupus Support Group that came at our last meeting, so that was really nice of them. They sent a nice no. Um, thanks, everyone, for, for doing that. Um, I was gonna say some other stuff, but I'm not, we'll do it the next meeting, I guess. Um, reports of committees. So, Counselor Givner's not here. Is, um, Counselor Sullivan, are you giving the updates for DGR? As the vice chair, or do you want me to leave these here?
We can take them up.
Okay. So, item thirty-two is from the Committee on Development Government Relations, to whom was referred in order a petition of Edward Cologne of twenty-three Springdale Ave for a street vendor license to be located at the gas station on Berkshire and Main Street. Awaiting disposition. Counselor Sullivan?
Yep, so, uh, we had a great meeting, uh, the, uh, regarding the petition, uh, Edwin Cologne was there. Uh, we had a short discussion around his base of operations at Neistress Races, uh, the use of the sidewalk at Berkshire and Main Streets, and, uh, the upcoming construction at the gas station on this corner. Uh, it was confirmed that Mr. Cologne needs a sidewalk permit from DPW in order to do business at this location. Uh, so we're recommending approval of, of the, the permit, uh, with the understanding that Mr. Cologne must obtain the DPW permit in order to start his hot dog and burgers business.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bartley?
Well, we were told last night that, at the meeting, that the permit was just through a chair to, to Mike. It, do we have the approval from DPW?
I don't know if that came in or not.
I don't know if Jeffrey.
I believe so.
You don't believe so, Attorney Bissinette?
No, I contacted, uh, Carl last night concerning this to make sure that he had a heads up that Mr. Cologne will be coming in today, and I asked him to, uh, report back. And, uh, as far as we know, Mr. Cologne did not appear today for the permit, but it will be expedited when he does get it.
Okay, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, and I, I don't, I don't have a problem passing this, but as I said last night, w- we were, when we take, you take a vote in anticipation of something happening, there's always a chance that that certain thing won't happen, and that's exactly the case tonight, which, which is what we, the, the chair wanted to keep in a committee, but that's not the way it worked out. But, but there's a couple other things. I mean, is, d- does he have a health permit? Does he have any other permits from, you know, the, the Fire Department? Does he have a food safety permit? Uh, does he have, I mean, listen, I like the guy a lot, but my understanding, he's already been, he's been doing business anyhow without a license. So, I, I mean, look, I, I know it was a rush to help our friends, and that's good, he's a good dude, but, I mean, we're, we're talking food service, where there's all sorts of possibilities for, for it to kick back on the city if somebody gets sick. So, I, I don't know why we did that last night, actually, I do know, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't have been done. So, I'm just hopeful we can sort of, maybe, just sort of table this until the first meeting in, in September, and, you know, to make sure he gets everything lined up. And, and I don't know if Mike wants to weigh in on that. If Mike thinks that's a bad idea, fine, but, that's, that's my two cents. So I, I won't make the motion until I hear from, uh, Mike or Mike on that.
Uh, Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, so, what we're approving is a street vendor license. I don't know if, uh, we have, it, it, I think it's upon him and the other groups to get all the other licenses necessary. This is the only one I believe before us.
Well, then, you can just make it, just make a condition and get any other ones, Mike. So that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
There you go. So, I'll just, I'm just gonna-
So, I would say-
I'm just gonna offer a friendly amendment to Mike's, that, that, that they've given the license pursuant to getting all the other prerequisite licenses and permits, okay?
Second.
So, the motion was made and seconded to, um, amend the, uh, approval, or the order, that the license will be approved pending?
Yeah, all, the aforesaid conditions.
Okay, the aforesaid conditions.
Are satisfied.
Are satisfied.
Got it. You nailed it.
Um, under discussion, uh, Counselor Jordan, and then I saw Counselor Rivera's hand.
Yeah, Madam President, I just wanted to say about, uh, Mr. Cologne. I know him personally to be a wonderful guy, and I know him to be, you know, absolutely upstanding citizen. If there's something that has to be done to do it the right way, you know, he will do it the right way. I mean, this is, this is a a very esteemed member of the community, so I have no, no problem vouching for this guy. Uh, he, he's very solid. And as far as the street vendor license piece goes, that's all we're approving. Eddie would have to get whatever other permits he has to get for food, safety, and all that, border health, all that type. We're just saying he's allowed to be there to have his business, and yeah, he, he's first-shelf type of person, so I, I have no problem trusting Eddie Cologne.
Okay, Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I, I've known him for a while, too, but I'm not saying it because of that, but ultimately, I think, I, I know about the situation, and the reason why he's come forward to get the actual license for the street vendor. Um, I, he, yeah, he has been operating before that without the license, but it was on private property on the gas station. And the gas station, it started upping the prices on him significantly, and someone told him to just get a street vendor's license and stay parked there in, in front of the street, and you don't have to pay the gas station, and that's what he's doing now. So, um, with regards to all the other permits, I'm assuming he already has that, because he's been operating there for quite some time, and ideally, you would think, he worked at the post office, he wouldn't, you would know, but again, you can assume. So, it's okay to have the stipulations, um, just 'cause, but I wouldn't say, that, I would say that the stipulation should be any, the same as anybody else that- say that the stipulation should be any, the same as anybody else that has a hot dog cart in Hoyok. Nothing different.
Right.
Okay. Isn't this like all this Board of Health stuff? Isn't that crazy? Yeah? Okay, whatever. All right, so the motion was made and seconded to approve this license pending approval of the DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 33 is the Committee on DGR, to whom was referred in order the petition of Open Square Realty LLC for a multifamily dwelling at 4 Open Square Way. Awaiting disposition, Councilor Sullivan?
Yep. So, Open Square is a housing development incentive program zone, which allows for residential in an IG zone. Open Square LLC has negotiated their tax increment exemption agreement through the Office of Planning and Economic Development. This project is going to add 84 market rate residential units, with buildout projected to begin this winter. Although this program does not require property owner to provide subsidized housing, they must accept vouchers from qualifying tenant applicants. Having come before us, other items related to this product, a special permit application was recommended to City Council for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else? Councilor Bartley?
Full support. This is, this is great news, frankly, so, I mean, it's, I think this is a big deal. I wish, I wish we had more people like this who want to invest in the city, but look what you guys did, they bought this building for 12 million, so they've already put a lot of money in it, and now they want to do even more things and create housing, and, I mean, this is what you want, so I'm all in.
All right, so the recommendation is that the order be adopted. All those, no, sorry, I'm doing a special permit, just kidding. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givern?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed it, thank you. Item 34, Committee on DGR, to whom was referred in order that the City Council approve an amended amendment to a home rule petition for the purpose of expanding the center city liquor license area. Councilor Sullivan, recommended the order be adopted. Councilor Sullivan?
Yeah, this is a very exciting restaurant business incentive, was proposed in addition to another expanded area request. I want to thank Council Bartley, he's been pushing this, he's been working with Oped, and I'd like to defer to him to give a summary on why we're doing this, and overall, it's a great tool for attracting new business, and we're recommending this forward for approval.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Anyone else?
Oh, Mike nailed it.
Okay. So, the recommendation is that the order be adopted?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Exactly right. So, what we're doing is, we gotta ask Boston for approval. I already talked to Pat about it, Pat's on top of this, so, as our advocate in the House, and I haven't talked to John, but I'm sure John will back it as well. This is gonna, I think, the point is, inspire more entrepreneurs to provide tableside food services, Mike pointed out, so, this is, and parts of the city that didn't get, it should have, it should have been included in the zone to begin with, but for whatever reason, it wasn't. So, now, it's going out to the end of, up to Lyman, and onto Main Street, and, you know, into the, into South Hoyok and the Flats, so, I mean, to me, this is positive, so I'm gonna support it, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Graney.
I'd like to move the question.
So, on the motion, recommended that the order be adopted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 35, Committee on DGR, to whom was referred in order that the Hoyok Downtown Parking Study Final Report be presented. Councilor, recommended that the order has been complied with. Councilor Sullivan?
Yeah, we had a great presentation by Natalie Press, she's a project manager, manager, and we're Community Transportation and Planning at Bowman. These findings highlighted Hoyok's parking and pedestrian accessibility to improve the ease of use. Hoyok was also encouraged to designate parking for long and short term to serve both business owners, downtown residents, and those visiting downtown businesses. Parking enforcement, recognizable pathways to tourism, shopping, and restaurants, as well as ease of the system's use. For example, functioning meters, garages, and payment systems were mentioned as necessary components to encourage and promote downtown use, and the takeaway was that we have plenty of parking, we just aren't using it effectively. So, the motion is the order's been complied with, and I think everybody's got copies of the report, it's, you know, it's quite lengthy, so.
Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the committee for taking that up, and then, gotta thank Jordan for running the committee for all that time, you know, she's just doing a volunteer gig, so that's pretty good. And then, the committee members, there are a lot of us, and I think everybody pitched it in their own way, and now, I understand from the President that we're gonna continue this further, and I think the Pres, I think you're gonna appoint me, I hope you are anyhow, and then, and then we'll, because there's more steps, there's a lot more to do. We got a really good report, I think that those of us that want to support the city, and the downtown in particular, gotta use this, try to nail that low-hanging fruit, as I think Kevin or Mike says all the time, and then, then, then try to work on the bigger things, but it's doable stuff. I mean, we've got the brain power and the technical skills to get it done, just gotta, just gotta implement it. The last thing is, the revenue collection. You know, we're very fortunate in enforcement, that's, that was the biggest piece, you know, enforcement, making, having people feel safe, better lighting, better landscapes, better signage, so, that's kind of, those are the kind of things that I think we can pick up on and, and make this work out better for these businesses, which goes right in hand with what we're, just, the order we just passed for the home rule petition. I mean, these people are putting their heart and soul downtown, and their, and their money, I mean, we gotta do what we can to support them, so that's that, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, and that's, that was my plan to appoint you, Councilor Bartley, except last night, when I was listening to the meeting, I thought you said you were suggesting that I should appoint Carmen?
Oh, wait a minute, now, Car, now, wait, if you want to put Carmen instead of me, yeah, yeah, because Carmen's on-
So, I might have misunderstood in last night's DGR meeting, but we can chat offline about that.
Carmen's on point with stuff.
I know, I know. But then, also, at large, Councilor Rivera has agreed to help with the Parking Committee as well, because I need to have one at large and one ward counselor, so thank you both.
I'll appoint Carmen.
Perfect, okay, so, recommended that the order's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 36, the Committee on Charter and Rules to, oh, we're, yeah, we're moving on to Charter and Rules, fun, fun. To whom was referred in order that a home rule petition be filed with amendments to the city charter, as required for consistency with state law pertaining to our city's restructuring of municipal finance. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Councilor McGrath Smith?
This was a short discussion where we just updated that the home rule petition had in fact been filed, and then we, you know, unanimously agreed that it had been complied with.
Okay. Seems pretty straightforward. Anyone else want to add anything? All right, so, motions been made and seconded, that the order's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 37, Committee on Charter and Rules, to whom was referred in order that the City Council Rule 10C be revisited in discussion. 10C is, says that we should appoint a youth ambassador to the City Council, and that the term should last one year, starting July 1st to July 30th, eligible to serve one term. This is for a Hoyok resident enrolled in a local high school or equivalent program between the age of 15 to 17 years of age. Councilor McGrath Smith, would you like to give a-
This is in the miscellaneous section at the end of our rules document, and we've sort of been going through a series of rules that have been in the, in our rules, but have not been necessarily followed, or haven't been implemented. This was a project that had really been taken on by a specific counselor who had come on and had really owned this and started this process, and then, when that counselor did not run for reelection, it sort of fell apart and wasn't continued. And the committee had a really nice conversation about the history of it, how it had gone, some of the flaws, some of the great things about asking, you used to be more involved in this way, and going over the history of it, but in the end, rather than move to the Joint School and City Council Committee, we decided to instead recommend the rule be removed without prejudice. It's not a bad rule, it's just that it needs to be, someone on council would have to have a very specific vision and really want to own making it happen and moving it forward. Otherwise, we would be asking our City Council assistants to effectively run this whole other layer of working with students, you know, finding the way to support them so that they know how to behave in chambers, how they can participate, make sure that they are in attendance, right? There's a lot of layers there, and so, the committee decided that it should be removed without prejudice, not to dissuade anyone else from refiling in some other way, if they have a clear way for how they could see more youth involvement occur in council. But because it's been a defunct rule for many years, it makes sense at this point, based on a unanimous vote, just to remove it without prejudice at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other thoughts? So, the recommendation is that the rule be removed without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. If it's going to a committee, we're not talking about it. Thank you, and I will enforce that. All right, item 38, filed by Council Bartley, ordered that a handicap sign be placed at 15 Davis Street, requested by Teresa Lewis.
Yeah, ordinance, Disability Commission, please.
Sure. Send to Ordinance and Commission on Disabilities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President, in the interest of time-
Yeah.
Can we take, because 39, 40, 42, 47, 48, 49, as a package, abbreviated, abridged reading, and just send them to the committees and places as indicated? That's my motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, let me make sure I got the numbers right. 39?
Yep.
70?
Nope, 40.
Oh, that looks like, I can't read my own writing. 39, 40, 42, 47, 48, and 49?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion received and refer as indicated, that's all.
39, filed by Council Bartley, with the washout of the water sewer line at South Elm Street behind Fitzpatrick Skating Rink, the impact on the neighborhood needs to be addressed. This is a constituent request, refer to DGR and the Parks Department. Item 40 is filed by Council Bartley, that DPW and the HFD Alarm Division come into City Council to provide a status update on the crosswalk improvement plan and traffic signal improvement at Elmwood Towers on South Street. Item 42 is filed by Council Bartley, that the, wait, 40? I'm just kidding. 42 is that DPW and the Fire Department Alarm Division come to City Council to provide a status update on the crosswalk improvement plan at the main gate of Hoyok Community College on Homestead Ave, and invite a representative from the college, please. 43?
Uh, I'm sorry, 47.
Shoot, sorry. 47 is filed by Council Bartley, procurement office present any contracts relative to the Anniversary Hill and Scott's Tower projects. If possible, please email the documents to the City Council Administrative Assistant as early as possible.
A copy to DGR.
And a copy to DGR, please.
Could you please add Sullivan to that?
Sure.
With Bartley's approval?
Okay. Then we had 48?
Yep.
Which is, I'm gonna add you, filed by Councilors Bartley and Ocasio, that Oped provide an update to the City Council regarding putting the following Ward 3 and Ward 2 properties on the market, 432 Hillside, 146 Brown Ave, and lots on St. Vincent and Ingleside. Refer to DGR and send a communication for the first City Council meeting in September. All those in favor?
Aye.
And 49.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the last one. Item 49 is filed by Councilors Bartley, Bacon, Jordan, Sullivan, Graney, ordered that Oped please provide an update on the former Kmart Plaza. Refer to DGR for a follow-up. So, on all of those orders, send to the appropriate committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, I gotta go back to 41, sorry.
Okay, 41 is filed by Councilors Bartley and McGrath Smith, that Hoyok State Delegation and their colleagues in the House and Senate from other Western Mass counties implore our friends at DCR to produce running water as quickly as possible for the myriad groups, supporters, hikers, and nature lovers who visit Mount Tom Reservation. This is a constituent request.
Yeah, so, my, the motion on this one is, is just to receive it, and because I, we've, we're understanding that the project for which we were alerted is now being implemented, so they're putting running water in there and that sort of thing, so, I think a lot of us got emails over the weekend, so I just said, well, I'll just file an order, just to put it before us for the thought that DCR wasn't gonna do anything, but looks like they're doing something, they're getting it done, so.
Okay.
The motion asks us to receive it.
Okay, to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 43, filed by Councilors Bartley and Jordan, order that the School Department, School Committee, Receiver, and Mayor present a plan for the future of Metcalf School. Like to hear long-term plans as well as temporary ones, and like the district to consider the city using this, continuing to use the school in its current purpose as a learning institution.
Yeah, so, motion just to send it to the joint committee and copy to the other people, and Kevin, I'm sure will have it here at some point.
All righty, so, refer to Hoyok, sorry, what's, add to that, Councilor Graney? So, the motions to refer to Hoyok Public Schools, the Receiver, the Mayor, and the Joint Committee with the schools. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 40-
Five.
44?
Four, we haven't done 44 yet. Filed by Councilor Bartley and Ocasio, DPW provide an update on its progress to install a street sign for Jones Ferry Road where it intersects at Ingleside. Receive, adopt, and refer to DPW?
Yeah, that's the motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 45 is filed by Councilor Bartley, that the DPW patch the hole, patch the pothole on Chapin Street near the Hibiscus Restaurant as soon as possible. It's a constituent request.
Yeah, receive, adopt, and refer to DPW.
Second.
Receive, adopt, and refer to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 46, filed by Councilor Bartley, procurement office provide any executed contracts between the city of Hoyok, the gas and electric, Hoyok Parks and Rec, and the organization heading the volleyball athletic center proposals for the open land in Elmwood. Please remit as soon as possible to the City Council Administrative Assistant, but in any event, no later than the first City Council meeting in September. in any event, no later than the first city council meeting in September.
Yeah, so, yeah, the motion just to receive and refer to those other various parties there so they can send communications.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment or discussion? I know we have a rule about that, but can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
So, I don't know what exactly happened, but I'm hearing a lot of stories about what happened at the hearing that Meg ran at Wycoff. I'm sure it was a good positive hearing, but I understand there's a lot of voices being considered. So, this is by far not a done deal. Now, what I'm understanding is that there's sale contracts that have been signed relative to the twenty-two acres kind of behind the fire station, which is Station Five on Whiting Farms. I would like to see the contracts. I'd like to see exactly what they say and what the contingencies are. I write, I reference in here, I mean, I realize that has to do with land, so I realize that maybe it's only subject to executive session, and that's fine, but they're, they, I mean, I want to see what they say. And, and so now I, and I'll tell you what, I now have several neighbors that also want to know what's going on, because they're really in the dark as to what's happening there.
Great.
So, that's the point. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Item, we'll go down to item fifty?
We just got a vote on forty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So, vote that we send this, receive and send to the city, Hoyoke Gas and Electric, Parks and Rec, and the organization heading the Volleyball Athletic Center proposals for the open land in Elmwood. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the procurement officer. I think it's, it's looking for procurement officer to give...
Oh, yeah, I said that, but that, yeah, you're right.
Okay.
Thanks, Kev.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, down to item fifty. I've got information fifty through...
Fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four.
Fifty-four. I would entertain a motion to take these...
Take these items up together and pass the first reading.
Motion has been made to take items fifty to fifty-four up as a package and, and pass the first reading. And I'm just gonna read them first, and I have the information on how many this represents. So, fifty, item fifty is a transfer of twenty thousand dollars, one hundred fifty-one and fifty-two cents. And that's from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty. And that represents seven individuals injured on duty. And we have fifty-one is also filed by Counselor Devine. It's a transfer request, four thousand nine hundred thirty-five and fifty-two cents from firefighter and captain to injured on duty, and that represents two. Fifty-two is also a transfer request of six thousand dollars, six thousand eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents from firefighter and captain to injured on duty. Pay period number one, that's for two individuals. Fifty-three is a transfer request of six thousand dollars, six thousand two hundred seven dollars and fourteen cents from firefighter captain to injured on duty, pay period three, and that also represents two. And then last, item fifty-four filed by Counselor Devine, a transfer request of ten thousand seven hundred six dollars and seventy-four cents from sergeants and patrolmen to injured on duty, and that represents seven. So, the motion was made to pass the first reading. Counselor Devine?
Yeah, and they're self-explanatory, you just read them, and so I'd like to pass them tonight, pass the second reading.
Let me just, does anyone have any other questions or comments? So, the motion was to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. And there's no other discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner? Greenie?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you with that, you've passed it. I'm gonna go to item fifty-five. Wait. Yeah. Okay.
Finance?
Ordered that there be a transfer of one hundred eight thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents from cannabis stabilization to solicitor claims and damages. Send to finance?
Yeah, I'm just...
So, it's urgent tonight.
Well, I'm just, perhaps Jeffrey can help me out a little bit here. My understanding, and I'm looking for if there was an order from our last meeting, that this was in there and we had to return it to the auditor because it was a different fiscal year. So, if this is the new fiscal year, I have no problem putting it in finance, but...
It does say update to twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
It's a new order that's replacing the one that's in finance right now.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, so, send to finance? All those in favor, oh, sorry.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Madam President, would you just remind me what the claims and damages are gonna be, they're gonna be addressed for the one hundred eight thousand from the cannabis stabilization?
I don't know, that's something for discussion in finance.
Does anyone know?
Why we're sending it to finance?
Thank you.
Okay. Fifty-six is filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that there be and hereby appropriate transfer of thirty thousand dollars from the mayor's CAFO line item to elections officers' line item, thirty thousand dollars.
Send to finance.
Send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fifty-seven filed by Counselor Devine is a transfer for fifty-eight thousand five hundred from Planner One, or Planner Two to Planner One?
Finance.
Finance.
Madam President, maybe what we can do is fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine?
We'd love to hear it, yep.
Sixty, sixty-one. I think that's all.
Sixty-one's actually a duplicate, I've just been, passed a note by my friend Jeffrey here, so...
Oh, that's right, duplicate, so those orders be received and taken up in finance.
Is fifty-eight time sensitive?
I don't know.
Okay, they never reached out to you on that one?
No.
All right.
All right, so we had fifty-seven, which was fifty-eight thousand five hundred, and then fifty-eight is a transfer of five thousand dollars from forestry tree climber to the engineering and professional services. Fifty-nine is that the city accepts the provisions of the student and senior safe programs, no match grant, and authorize the establishment of a fund. Sixty is also that the city accepts the provisions of the EO EEA Greening the Gateway Cities Program Implementation Grant, which is for one hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars, no match. And sixty-one is filed by Counselor Devine.
Duplicate.
And that's the duplicate.
Return to auditor, item sixty-one.
Return to the auditor for sixty-one. And send fifty-five, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Item sixty-two filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that the mayor in conjunction with the Hoyoke Police and Disabilities Commission give an update on making HPD building handicap accessible, send to public safety?
Yep, we receive and send to public safety.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, sixty-three filed by Counselor Devine and Anderson Burgos, ordered that a Do Not Block the Box be painted on North Hampton Street and West Franklin Street.
We receive and send to the DPW.
Is there already an ordinance for it?
I'm sorry?
Is there already an ordinance for it?
Not that I'm aware of, no, so...
You'd have to go to ordinance, establish an ordinance.
Okay, so we'll send this to ordinance committee then instead. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordered, sixty-four is ordered that, filed by Counselor Devine, ordered that the Law Department render an opinion if city council rule nine C be changed from forty-five continuous days to forty-five business days, report back to the full council.
Receive and send to the Law Department.
Receive and send to the Law Department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-five is filed by Counselor Gibner. By the request of several business owners, update graffiti ordinances seventy-four dash one hundred and seventy-four one oh one to transfer law enforcement responsibilities onto HPD instead of property owners, or give building owners warnings with a grace period of a specified number of days to clean up the graffiti before being fined.
We receive and send to public safety.
Received and sent to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
It wouldn't go to ordinance?
The orders, I'm just following what Counselor Gibner filed, it says public safety at the end there.
She might be wanting to do the preliminary discussion instead of ordinance.
So, public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-six filed by Counselor Greenie, ordered that no group homes, profit or nonprofit, be allowed within the city limits of Hoyoke without the approval of the Hoyoke City Council.
Ordinance?
Send to ordinance plus a copy to Representative Duffy and Senator Vellis.
Okay, so, send...
And Law Department, please.
Send to, send a copy to, wait, so send to the ordinance committee and send a copy to the Law Department and our state delegation. Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-seven is filed by Counselor Greenie, ordered that the City of Hoyoke Tax Workoff Program for Seniors be increased from thirty to seventy slots. Furthermore, that the stipend be increased from seven fifty to a thousand. Rationale, applications for the program have dramatically increased. Do you want this sent to...
Probably to finance, I'm not sure, because it isn't directly, it's related to taxes.
Assessors Office, perhaps? That's where it used to go.
Assessors Office.
It's set by ordinance.
Okay, so why don't we send it to ordinance and we can send a copy to the assessors office?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-eight filed by Counselor Jordan, ordered that DPW and Violia provide the city council with a report and illustration of all outstanding high priority capital needed for CSO improvement, transmission line, and/or the plant itself required over the next ten years. Spell out the cost of the projects, timeline for completion and location. Report any grant funds or low-interest loans available to subsidize the projects. Please report to the city council within forty-five days of receipt. Just a copy to DPW and Violia?
Yeah, receive, adopt, refer to the DPW and Violia.
Receive, adopt, and refer to DPW and Violia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-nine filed by McGrath Smith, ordered that Kennedy Circle be added to ordinance section eighty-six dash three-two-five, schedule four stop streets so that a permanent stop sign can be placed. This is a request from the interim city, the interim engineer indicating that a stop sign is warranted.
Received ordinance.
Send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item seventy is filed by Counselor McGrath Smith, ordered that there be a transfer in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, one of one hundred and eleven thousand dollars from capital stabilization to highways, R and M streets, and fixtures?
Finance.
Finance.
There's a grid that's attached to this that I'll make sure gets sent to finance from the clerk as well.
Okay.
This is connected to the non-accepted roads, for folks who may want to attend to be a part of that conversation.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Seventy-one is filed by McGrath Smith, ordered that rule four B be amended to reflect current practice and open meeting law, clarifying that items for city council meeting agendas are due at noon, not one o'clock, and adding that a Monday holiday would also change the deadline to Thursday instead of Friday.
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy-two is filed by Counselor McGrath Smith and Councillors Devine, ordered that the library director and financial manager come into city council to provide an update concerning how the library is responding to the fees associated with the tax exemption issue and the potential impact to services.
We receive and send to finance?
Receive and send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We did seventy-three? Did seven, we did not do seventy-four. And there is a typo in seventy-four. Filed by myself, ordered that the state primary and a state election in the City of Hoyoke for the expression of various office of candidates of political parties for offices here in stated B, and they are hereby called to be held on Tuesday, September third, and it should be Tuesday, November fifth?
Fifth.
Right, okay. In various places as designated by the city council. Polls open at seven and remain open until eight PM. So, I'm...
Receive and adopt?
Receive and adopt with the amended...
As amended.
As amended.
November.
Counselor Jordan?
I thought we were required in the order to list the actual polling locations by precinct in the order. So, I noticed that.
In the order?
Yeah, because it says as designated by the council, but I believe we're required to set the polling locations. If you look at the historical ones we've done, that's how we've done it, so I would just, I'm assuming there's been no changes, right, for the... Usually there is two orders, Jeffrey's right. And, but, we, what, you know, maybe we can combine it into one. If there's been no changes in the polling locations, maybe we just say the same locations as the last election?
Kelly, does that make sense? Okay. So, we would add, we would amend it to November fifth and, say, at the... At the established locations?
Yeah. Rosemary Towers?
Right.
City Tower, you know, all the way down the road, line.
Yeah. Okay. That sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Seventy-five filed by myself, with community support, ordered that the city council dedicate Hillside Avenue as David M. Bartley Way in recognition of David M. Bartley Senior, who served as a member of the Massachusetts House of Representatives from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen seventy-five, Speaker of the Massachusetts House of Representatives from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen seventy-five, Secretary of Admin and Finance from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen eighty-three, and President of Hoyoke Community College from nineteen seventy-five to two thousand and four. Receive, yes, under discussion.
Receive and adopt, but I was gonna make just a friendly inquiry.
Of course.
Was that supposed to be Hillcrest?
Did I write Hillside? Yeah.
Yeah, only, only, I thought that's what you meant.
Yep, that's what I meant.
It's Hillside, Hillcrest, it's very similar.
It all happened so fast.
It's all a hill, you know, and that's a pretty steep one, right where that one is too.
That's right, yeah.
So, I thought, I just wanted to thank you.
Thanks for catching that.
Yeah, and this is a very thoughtful order by you to do this, and very much in support of it.
Yeah, I just, I'm sure my, my mom will be really flattered, and obviously I'm flattered, and, and while it's a little dead-end street that nobody really goes on about too often, it'll still be a nice little honorary symbol for Dad, and we very much appreciate it.
Great, thank you. You want it to be Homestead?
He's already got, he's already got the gem up there, that's enough.
Be a win-win.
That's enough for him, he's got, he's got the gem.
All right.
Dad's good. I appreciate you, that's enough.
I thought I was gonna have to change my address and everything else.
All right, we have eleven minutes, guys, we're so close. Okay, seventy-six filed by Counselor Ocasio, that DPW install a handicap sign for Anna Rodriguez at three sixty-one Chestnut Street, send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Seventy-seven filed by Counselor Ocasio, that DPW remove handicap signs at five eighty-eight South Summer Street and...
Ordinance?
Ordinance.
Yep, ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item seventy-eight filed by Counselor Israel Rivera, order that the Personnel Department and Law Department work in conjunction to update the following ordinances to reflect a modern human resources department, and then we have a bunch of articles mentioned.
Ordinance?
Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And Law Department says too.
Oh, and Law Department, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seventy-nine filed by Councilor Jenny Rivera in order to declare two eighty-five Main Street surplus.
DGR.
Send to DGR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eighty is filed by Jenny Rivera ordered to request the installation of a handicap parking spot at fifty-six Moser Street.
Ordinance.
Send to ordinance.
And a copy to disabilities.
And a copy to disabilities, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eighty-one, we did that, we sure darned did do that. Eighty-two filed by Councilor Bacon that an ordinance be created that establishes a public process for approving the installation of raised crosswalks.
Ordinance.
Ordinance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eighty-three filed by Councilor Bacon that Hoyoke double the tax abatement for veterans as authorized by the HERO Act.
I think that has to go to ordinance.
Okay, so send a copy to ordinance and, and, I mean, send to ordinance, do you want a copy to the Assessors Office?
You should.
Like the other one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eighty-four filed by Councilor Bacon that a permanent sign indicating traffic late ahead be placed before the curve on Westfield Road approaching Aprimont Highway, receiver refer to DPW engineer to evaluate and determine if warranted and proper placement?
Yes, that would be fine, and then just a report can come, well, actually, can I send it to Public Safety?
Sure.
Okay.
So, send to Public Safety with a copy to the DPW engineer?
Yeah, and just quickly, part of it's already done, so there's just one part.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we have one late file.
Eighty-six to Finance?
Eighty-six to Finance, oh wait, we do have more than that, sorry, I was getting excited. Filed by Councilor Devine that we hereby accept the provisions of the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant Award, Daybrook Watershed, one million two hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty dollars, no match, and authorize the establishment of a fund, send to Finance? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Awesome, motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.